All right, here we go. Call this meeting to order, please. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mark Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen. Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Here.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And I've asked Chief Abel to lead us in the pledge. We had a great service yesterday, 9/11 service. Chief, thank you.
Yes, sir. The train on your mark, be ready. Blessed be the allegiance to the five of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Let's have a quick prayer, and then we'll get rolling. Thank you for this awesome day that you have made today, Lord. And Father, we just thank you for, we thought of all the families yesterday that were affected by that situation. And 23 years ago, and we just lift up all the different family members, wherever they may be, the children, the grandchildren, the wives or husbands, and we just want to remember them. And we just ask a blessing over this meeting today that we would do the best we can. And we thank you again, and we ask all this in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, how about any requests for deletions or emergency additions? Anybody have anything? Nope, okay, so we'll move on with that. Okay, so, Marnie, I guess we're going to open public comment. We have, anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, Van Kadenhead.
Surprise, surprise. I'm Van Kadenhead. This is a very important meeting because we've not done this revamp of the comp plan and the LDR since the inception of the village. And there's been minor tweaks along the way, but it really needs to be looked at from A to Z and gone through with a fine-tooth comb and, you know, in its own time. No rush. But I really think that you should ask the people today to complete their survey within a set amount of time. In other words, I hope you can have like 60 to 90 days to have a report back from them on what they see the problems are and what they see the fixes are. So, because that'll give us a whole lot more information to work with quicker. I don't want this to, I hope it doesn't drag out, let's say, for six months or a year. You know, let's try, let's try to get the information and get it used, you know, in use as quickly as possible. And I wish everybody here the best, and I wish all four of the contestants in the contest here today the best. And I hope the best team wins. And because Al Marada's got to win. We really need this badly because it's been such a long time. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Marnie, anybody else?
Yes, Don Horton.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Don Horton, 47 Schooner Bay Road. I just want to thank y'all for starting this process and getting this underway. It's long overdue, and you've got some good competitors. And I hope that we spend the time, as much time as it takes for us to do this right, so that we don't have to continue having people come in front of you and asking for zoning changes to correct incorrect things that happened before. I would prefer that we spend the time to go property by property, street by street, and get this right. It's an exciting thing that we're about to go under and something that's long overdue that we need to do. So, I truly appreciate the work that y'all are going to do, the future council is going to do, and certainly the work that Jennifer is going to have in front of her because she's going to have her hands full. But I've got confidence in her to do this the right way, too, and all of her staff. So, thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Marnie, any other public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, public comment is now closed. Okay, so, I guess, Rob, do we have any reports? It says here, what's that, right there? Background regarding presentations, proposals?
No, I defer to Jennifer. She can provide some brief background before we invite our first presenter up. Thank you.
All right, Jennifer?
Thank you, Council. So, as you may remember, this evening, we're going to hear from four consultants that submitted proposals for our comprehensive plan update. We had five responses to the RFP. One consultant chose not to present this evening. So, we're proceeding with the four that did choose to present. As you may remember, on April 9th, the council gave direction for us to seek proposals from professional consultant services to update the comprehensive plan. We then issued that RFP on May 29th. And as I said, we saw, we received five proposals. We, there was an evaluation committee appointed by the village manager who evaluated and ranked those five proposals. We made a presentation to the village council on August 8th with our recommendation, but at that meeting, the council gave direction for us to schedule these presentations from all the proposers for village council consideration. As I said, four of the five proposers accepted that invitation to make the presentation, and one proposer declined. So, the presenters tonight are Able City East LLC, Calvin Giordano and Associates, Inc., Chen Moore Associates, and Inspire Placemaking Collective Incorporated. They are all being sequestered at this time because we felt that that would be best and the most level playing field for them all. I'll bring them in one at a time in alphabetical order. They'll have PowerPoint presentations. We told them that the maximum time for their presentation would be about 15 minutes, and that you would have an opportunity after their presentation to do a question and answer period with them. And then they could stay in the room for presentations after theirs if they so chose. So, if you don't have any additional questions at this time, I can go ahead and get the first consultant. Or, oh, John does have one thing he wants to say.
I just wanted to remind everybody that the cone of silence is still in effect. That doesn't apply to open, open public meetings. But until there's an actual contract that's approved, the cone of silence is in effect for this RFP.
Thank you, John.
So, if nobody has any specific questions about the process, I'm happy to go get Able City East if you're all ready.
Council, anybody have any questions?
I do. John, please. I'm not following you on your co-assignment.
Co-silent.
Oh, silence?
Silence, yes.
I thought, I thought he said Simon, and I was, what the hell is he talking about?
The one guy on the trash thing that they called and asked permission, and they can't.
I'm just keeping you on your toes.
I move a motion to change it. Henry, let's change it to the code of Simon from now on.
That got his attention.
All right, I stand corrected. Thank you.
Okay. You were ready. Well, we know you were listening. I thought it had something to do with magic or something.
Able City East LLC. And I do have a copy of the proposals here. If anybody would like to see one, I can pass it down. Can you pass that down, please? And there might be another, is there another copy on the table? There are also two copies on the table if you all need one, too.
Here, I'll go get another one. Hey, Mark, can you grab a couple? I'll give this to Henry.
Come on up to the podium. Whenever you're ready. Just introduce yourselves and...
Well, hello, my name is Jason King. I am principal and co-owner of Able City East. And I am here with...
Hello, my name is Nuki. I'm an environmental consultant.
Well, it's an honor to be here today. We have the PowerPoint presentation loaded, it would seem, and thank you for that. And what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go through a quick presentation, and then, is there time for Q and A?
There is, yes.
Excellent, great, terrific. Well, thank you again for having us. My name is Jason King. Our office, Able City East, is based in Miami. We're working with Street Plans Collaborative and Integrate Partners and Horsley Witten Group. And I get to be the project director of a very talented, multidisciplinary team. Our firm does everything. Planning...
Can I ask one question before?
Great head.
Do you ever do anything with the redevelopment association or CRAs? Have you?
Yes, CRAs are a big client of ours, yeah.
Because you look a little familiar, that's why.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, sure. Yeah, I think maybe even somewhere in this graphic that probably says Community Redevelopment Agency or Redevelopment Agency. Because we do planning, architecture, economic development, and community engagement. And our firm works all over the country. We work all over the world. It's the idea of working just, you know, not very far from South Miami where our home and offices is very exciting. If you go to planning school nowadays, there's a good chance that you're reading about projects we've done or things we were part of. I wrote the chapter in Doug Faris' Sustainable Urbanism book, and we're featured in Dan Prolog's Foreign-Based Codes book. I have two books that I'm the author of, which are particularly pertinent to the Keys. One is about climate planning, and the other is about equity planning. And again, Nuki and I represent a much larger team. We've got a team of street designers and economists and engineers, environmental engineers. We've all worked together on many different projects. So, I was trying to think of, you know, you really can't go wrong, as far as I'm concerned, with all the consultants that you're going to be meeting with today. They're all friends of ours, we've worked with all of them. And so, Nuki and I were trying to brainstorm on what makes our firm different. What we could bring to this project that no other firm would bring. And there's two things. One is that we specialize in island communities. I grew up on a little peninsula in Bristol, Rhode Island. And every time, and my father's a fisherman, and we've always been working in these island communities. Really quick, I'm going to show you a couple. The very first comprehensive plan I ever did was in the Turitaw Islands in Thailand, in Satum Province. And I was much younger, and my hair was long. My wife is so happy, I don't have long hair anymore. But that was my very first exposure to urban planning. And I would say, my second was probably working on the Livable Communitys Project. Any of you remember this? Yeah, so Monroe County took on creating its own comprehensive plan. Barely had any consultants, and we worked on it ourselves. At that time, Al Marada was just in some ways getting going. I was a senior planner in Monroe County for two years. I lived in Tavernier for two years, had my little boat. Our family still comes down here all the time. So, my boat is in Snake Creek Marina. We go to Hog Heaven, Too Much. One of the great achievements of that plan was the Tavernier Historic District. It was hard to create a historic district in a place that floods and sees big storms, but thank God we did. It's a beautiful little bit of culture that we helped to preserve. In Jean Laffitte, Louisiana, we were working on a resiliency plan, another small community. To protect them, they came up with the idea of a ring levee that would surround them. It was a very expensive solution, but there's not many people in Jean Laffitte similar to Al Marada. And so, what we helped them imagine was a way to retreat to the heart of town. And by focusing their resilience, infrastructure efforts, they were able to get a $300 million seven-foot levee, which has helped protect that town time and time again. This is island planning, but still, you never turn your back on the water. We embrace the water. Maybe a little lighter than previously, maybe structures that we can say goodbye to, but we don't, we don't turn our back on the water. We've been working in Allo Bay and Dauphin Island, south of Mobile, and it looks like this. And the economy's being devastated by one storm after another, and the houses that used to rent out at very high, essentially the whole economy was renting out these big houses, is changing. And what we needed to do is to design a town center. A town center, that was, we'd say locally, kind of Keyzy, right? Small buildings, but small buildings up high. Al Marada is going to be faced with this kind of issue. And so, the question is, you know, what kind of place do you create? What's the place that endures, what lasts? And we worked closely with our economists. It's not just an illustrative plan, it's also a plan based in economic reality. Like I said, our firm does visioning, but we also do economic development. So, we worked to figure out what was, what the gap was and what is missing. We worked in North Beach, and that's an island. Miami Beach is an island, very different from Al Marada, but an island nonetheless. And some of the big achievements that I count, having worked there for so long, is the lifting of streets. We're part of that effort. The lifting of public spaces, you know, whenever they rebuild the parks, they're higher than they used to be. The pump stations and the streets that used to flood and no longer flood anymore. You know, a lot of people worked on the plan for Miami Beach, but we were a big part of it. We're working right now in Martha's Vineyard and Edgar Town. The plant, the problem there is affordable housing. Probably sounds familiar. This is the fire station, those are the firemen. And what we've been trying to do is take municipal land and build the housing that the workers who work those plants, you know, the firemen and the water workers and the wastewater people, and we're building affordable housing. That's also in keeping with the high architectural standard of Edgar Town. Because if affordable housing is not beautiful and delightful, then the community is against, and so, design matters. That's something that we're really proponents of. And at the same time, in Edgar Town, we're taking parking lots, and you have parking lots on the water. And parking lots overlooking the water, it's, the land's too valuable, and we're working to create, turn those parking lots into great, high-quality public spaces. What's different about our firm is that we're architects, and we're landscape architects first, we're designers. And we design at every scale. Your comprehensive plan is way up here. We'll give you a very competent and beautiful goals, policies, and action items, but we can also do what Florida we call a master plan, and that's the design of streets, public spaces, and buildings. That's what we do, very, very comfortably. And we also think about the environment.
Hello, everyone. To briefly reintroduce myself again, my name is Nuki. I'm a consultant. I have a Masters of Science in Environmental Technology and another degree in human geography. I'm very excited to be here today. I think Al Marada truly represents a great intersection of these two fields that I'm so passionate about. So, here in the Florida Keys, mangrove forests serve as a vital habitat for local ecosystems and fishing communities, but they also serve as a great natural form of resilient infrastructure. So, though there have been small-scale volunteer-based efforts to restore mangroves, there has yet to be a large-scale deliberate effort to do so. So, with the help of environmental permits, we can build rock walls that then in turn help protect mangrove seedlings that are in the process of growing. And this in turn altogether serves as a buffer that absorbs the energy and forceful effects of rising sea levels and storms. So, here where we stand today, on Founder's Park, surrounded by mangroves on a beach that needs replenishment and is at risk, mangroves can serve as a vital tool to help protect against these threats in the future.
So, that kind of thing, beautiful visualizations to communicate to the public. If I have some more time to present, let's talk about the process. The other thing that makes us different from the other firms is that instead of periodic workshops, what we do is we create the plan onsite, in person, over a week-long charrette, is what it's called. We take a room like this, and we'd set up camp. We'd bring our, our whole team, 12 people. And people could come in through the week, and they would talk to us and stand over our shoulder and interact with us. That's our public process. It's, we've got workshops, too, and we've got adoption meetings, but the charrette is the thing that Nuki and I love about our work. The charrette is where we learn about what you've been working on, strategic plans, state plans, regional plans. We advertise the charrette, we're liked and we're followed, and we talk to the editors of the newspapers. And we get the word out. We have a big kickoff event that will involve a lot of people because this is Al Marada, and this is like a super committed community. And then we involve them, we deputize them. They become planners. In a series of exercises, they are giving us input that we put into the plan. They get up and they talk about their projects or what they're interested in. What the public produces isn't necessarily a work of art, but we can translate that into, into the plan. We take those ideas that we get during the charrette. We give it to our economists and our transportation planners and our engineers and people like Nuki, and we design, we draw a future. And that future is bounced off of the stakeholders and the decision-makers. And we keep proposing and disposing until we come up with a vision that everyone can agree to. Wherever we can, we like to involve school kids because that's just fun. We ride around with the community, and we tour during that week. And then we, with Street Plans Collaborative, we...
Yes, so with Street Plans Collaborative, we work together to design the streets with the goal of a complete street with the safety of all in mind, including cars, cyclists, and pedestrians. So, in the workshop, in the initial days, we start with these sketches of concept development. And these sketches are then turned into finalized plans. In this instance, there are two to give the public options of how they would like to proceed. And then, at the end of the workshop, there is an open house where all the plans are presented, and everyone gives their feedback and thoughts.
So, we're almost at the end. We, every time we do a presentation, we use keypad polling. It's always interactive. At this point in the presentation, we'd be asking people questions, and they'd be voting in on it. At the end of the charrette, we ask us to plan on the right track. And generally, people are, because they can see their ideas on the screen, they're a part of the conversation, they're in favor of the project. part of the conversation, they're in favor of the project. We create a beautiful plan, people like Nuki have a great eye for creating something that people want to have on their coffee table. It's an exciting, beautiful plan. On a respecter time, I want to move to the finish. Now, our firm bid twice as much as every other firm, and we are worth every dollar. Nuki is worth every dollar. But we bid twice as much than Al Marada has. What I'm proposing is no reduction in services, but a reduction in the price. I've been coming to Al Marada for a long time. I would love to donate the half that cost and to bring our fee down to what you have so we could be, I could continue. It's been 18 years since I've lived in the Keys. I would love to continue to be part of your story. Now, our firm was a little different, because we proposed changes to the land development regulations. We're very serious about that. You can't just do a comprehensive plan and not change the land development regulations, because it's a plan that'll sit on the shelf. We want to do that, you know, no reduction in services. I want to write the ordinances, the affordable housing ordinance, the shoreline protection ordinance, the working waterfront ordinance. If these ideas come up in that charrette while we have everybody's attention and while we're working with you all, let's see this through. So let's write ordinances, let's make sure that the plan is just the beginning and not the end. So, I don't know if it's possible, if you're able to even do it. But what I'm saying is that, I create, I have my own firm, and I'm able to do things that some other firms, the bigger ones, are not able to do. I'm able to, I've never filled out a timesheet, I'm able to commit to the, we say yes to the projects we totally believe in. And I believe in Al Marada and want to be here. And we can figure out a way to make it work financially for everybody involved. So, I think it'd be helpful to go to Q and A if there's time.
Counsel, anybody have any questions?
I'll just, hi, my name's Mark Gregg. I agree with the first statement that you made, that there's, all of you guys are good, all of the people in our presentations. It's just different flavors of good, so.
Yeah.
At any rate, some folks in town, I think there's kind of a loose consensus that we are either at build-out or very close to that. So, I would expect that your effort would be, unlike, say, a new city or a developing city, we would be a redeveloping city. So, can you give us any specific points of your, or any information about your experience or your thoughts or plans about how you might address that specifically? I really like, I'm going to say it wrong, Nuki's experience with living shorelines and mangroves. I grow mangroves at my house in a swimming pool, the kiddie pool, I love them. And so I'd love to see a lot of those on the shoreline, but things of that nature that deal with climate change, build-out, and affordable housing, those are big talking points here. So any specific thoughts you have on that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Sure. Specifically, your community is about seven square miles. And within those seven square miles, you have 700 businesses. Think about that, all of the restaurants, all of the shops, 700 businesses. Typically, a community your size, seven square miles, would have about 150. So you're packed. So this isn't about new stuff, this is about upgrades. There is a lot in the Keys that could be upgraded. It could become more resilient, it could also become a little more, a little different. Your area of special state concern, and the ROGO system is quite strict, and you have a TDR program. Nevertheless, I think we have to think of a way that we can improve, strategic upgrades. The Keys should continue to grow up and not out. The Keys should continue to improve, you have to. You can't look like you did in the 1970s. What we're going to be looking to do is to find a way, following all the rules, that could bring new investment and new options, new choices, new places to eat and new places to work to the Keys. So yeah, absolutely, built-out, but there's still, it doesn't mean it's done. There's still room to grow, and there's a lot of room for improvement, even in Al Marada, which is the nicest part of the Keys. You know that there's room for improvement. We have to, we'd love to work with you on trying to figure out how.
Okay. Henry?
Your experience, I suspect that you have reviewed the comp plan that is now, we're practicing. What brought to light in that comp plan that needs attention?
So you've got, you've got a commitment to building affordable housing, which you have not met, right? So, so that's not uncommon. It's just a lot harder on, in an island community. It's a lot harder when there's not available land. It's a lot harder when affordable housing has to be built where there's currently commercial. I think, what I'm afraid of with Al Marada, what I'm afraid of on all of the Keys, is that all the workers are coming in on the buses in the morning, and the traffic is getting worse and worse. Towns, islands fail if they can't learn to be self-sufficient. The day that your town manager, your town planners, you know, your police department, the day that they're all commuting two hours to come down here is the day that you're at the brink of failure. And I've seen it, I've seen it in Nantucket, you know, I've seen it in the Turutau Islands. When I look at your comprehensive plan, I think the big thing that we need to work on is affordable housing. And I know everybody's been talking about that for a long time. Our firm are architects, we can design it, we can draw it. And that's the thing I would love to work on. That's the unmet goal. The very first, when Al Marada Incorporated, when it started, when it broke away from Monroe County, it said that they were going to be different. And one of the things it was going to do is build its resident working population and build affordable housing. And you've done a lot, you've achieved amazing things, there's some beautiful stuff going on. But there's still, there's still a lot of room. I wrote a book called Equity Planner, and a large part of it is about affluent communities like this, island communities, getting serious about affordable housing and doing it a way that people can all agree on. So that's what I'd be most excited to work on, to be quite honest.
How much experience do you have in dealing with critical state concern?
Right, so, you know, so, you know, working with Monroe County, you know, we met in Tallahassee, we debated and we haggled the area of critical state concern to create the tier system, and we came up against quite a few guardrails and boundaries. We understand that the area of critical state concern designation is important, but it takes away local control. And so, one thing that we'd be looking to do is to work with the state and satisfy all the requirements, but still give more control back to the people of Al Marada.
Have you experienced that particular situation elsewhere, and have you dealt with it and how?
Sure, even in, so when we created the Historic District in Tavernier, you've got to understand, the state said, you can't create a Historic District here, because it's going to keep all the buildings on the ground. So that meant that all those great little structures at the bottom of Key Largo were all going to be lost. We were fought on the creation of that Historic District by state regulators, well-meaning, smart, intelligent people. But we managed to be, to create a Historic District, a new Historic District in the Keys. So that was, that was an eye-opening experience. That's the kind of thing.
Okay, go ahead.
I particularly am a advocate for affordable housing, and in particular, more particular, accessory dwelling units. So I'd like to know if you've had some experience with that, and do you see that as being a viable part of the solution to affordable housing here?
That's right. So, that's where affordable housing starts. That is the first step you take to creating affordable housing. In my town, South Miami, affordable, or ADUs, accessory dwelling units are not allowed. I created a nonprofit organization dedicated to getting the town to create, to, you know, to adopt an ADU ordinance. I have not been successful yet, but that's the level of commitment that I have, is that in my own town, you know, I'm the one pushing for that. We're going to do that there. Every town should adopt an ADU ordinance. And I know, it's controversial, trees will have to come down at times, you know, hurricane evacuation times are affected. I understand the disadvantages to ADUs, but you're creating affordable housing. And the golden rule of planning, I think, is create housing, build places for people to live, you know, so.
Okay. Young man, I got a question.
Yep.
Okay, ADUs, that's something there, that, I mean, AARP, that's nationwide, you know, they recommend doing this. This can, everybody, every, all the states have, throughout the United States, have a problem. But would you explain to me, because affordable housing in the Keys is really not affordable, okay? But workforce housing, okay? Tell me the difference, what you think your scenario is between affordable and workforce, because what we need in Al Marada is workforce housing. That, say, a couple that's, could live in, or a young married couple could live in to tell they get started that, you know, and not have to buy, you know, I mean, Habitat has done a lot of great things here, but, you know, when you talk about affordable, some people here in Al Marada are paying 300,000 what they consider affordable and more, you know? So, give me your opinion, or give me your synopsis on between affordable and workforce, because we're looking for workforce housing here that is affordable for the people living there.
Well, Mayor, honestly, you said everything. I'm not sure how much I have to add to that. You have to prioritize the workforce. If you start to, Habitat is good, HUD programs are good, but those, that federal money comes with strings, and those strings do not allow a local preference. What you need to do is build housing that can have, that your planners can, you know, can live out, your fire chief can use to live. That's right. What you need is workforce housing, and those are going to be local programs.
And what you said about people coming in town, even the sheriff in Key West, they come all the way from Dade County.
Yeah.
Okay? And they have to let their cars go north, I think, you know, because they get them back and forth.
Scary thing in an island community is that night that there's a fire, and only three fire personnel show up, because they can't drive two and a half miles to get to that fire. That's terrifying. The scary thing is if a water main breaks, and those repair guys all live three hours away, and you're going to lose 100 gallons of water a minute. You know, yeah, absolutely, towns fail if they can't, if they do not have workforce housing. This is a very serious situation. We don't want to see Al Marada fail. Everything you said, completely agree with.
Because I think workforce housing is unique, because it might not be as big as people think affordable, but it is because of the creativity. What I've seen going to redevelopment conferences, and I've visited these towns that have CRA that they've got a lot of money from, and they've did great things. Jack's Beach is one, you know, Dunedin is another one. I mean, there's, right there in Tampa, there's, you know, it's, and Al Marada, I would say, is really nothing but, you know, redevelopment. I mean, there is room for growth, but very smart growth, okay? Green growth, and, but really, the growth is in redevelopment.
Yeah, that's right.
But like the businesses you were talking about, could we, can we come up with some kind of concept that we could put a workforce housing on top of businesses?
That's right.
I mean, Kathleen Pasidomo said, when she drives from Tallahassee coming to Key West, she said, "I see all those units in Monroe County, but we don't have, all those businesses, we could have workforce housing, you know, on top of those, and we could create something." Or when they build a new marina or new hotel, we, they have to create so many workforce housings.
Absolutely. The reason we have an affordable housing problem in this country is largely because we started building one-story commercial structures with nothing above. And I understand there's reasons for that, in the Keys especially, but we just have to undo that, because that's where affordable housing starts, just like you said. Houses above the commercial.
So you have experience in being able, in creativity, okay?
Yeah, loads.
Okay. And what I like is, number one, you said you've been coming here, and you own a house here, or you have a boat here?
I have a boat in the Snake Creek.
Okay.
Yeah, or it has a different name now.
Okay. Vice Mayor Elizabeth, you guys have any questions?
My questions are all stolen by these guys, so. I think the biggest problem you guys are going to have here is, I have a building, a commercial building in Al Marada, and I'd love to put workforce housing on top of it, but, good luck with the parking situation. That is our number one problem, I think. I would have, I've already asked if I could put workforce up there, and it's like, no, because the commercial's taking that up. So, that's going to be a big challenge. I do love the mangroves and the rock walls, I'm 100% into that, and that is something that is usually overlooked, but it's so very important. So, kudos to you guys, I'm good.
Again, you know, we've got architects on staff. I would love to take your property and to draw it the way you want to see it, and to encounter that parking problem, and try to figure out a way in which it could work. We design at the level of the town, but we also design at the level of the lot. We have architects, we're capable of that. And those architects can then figure out what, you know, why the regulations are saying no, and let's try to figure out a way.
Yeah, my only, thank you for coming and your presentation. I know one of the requests was to review the current comprehensive plan and then also the land development regulations, and I think you may have touched on that, but could you just speak briefly on your area of expertise in that way?
Yeah, yeah, sure. So the RFP talked about, you know, create the comprehensive plan, and then talk about, discuss the changes that would be necessary to the land development regulations. What we proposed is actually to write the new ordinances. The changes that the comp plan sort of mandate or necessitate or suggest, we want to write those ordinances. Staff is very busy. We have experience writing ordinances. I write form-based codes, I write unified development codes, because we're not just a comprehensive plan firm, we run the rights, land development regulations. And again, I just don't feel like we're doing the job if we stop at the comp plan level. It's very high up, it's required, and it's important, but I want to, I like the level in which change actually happens.
Well, and I think to the, the RFP speaks to that. I think here, when it says we're performing the following project tasks, conduct a full review of the current comprehensive plan and land development regulations, including data analysis and policy review, so I think that is something that we are requesting. Am I fair to say? Is not one, is that fair to say?
No, I know, that wasn't requested in the RFP, they added that as an option.
Okay, so I'm looking at the RFP, but, which is, I'm reading it from the RFP. It says, because, from what, from what we've been provided, so, did I, am I misreading it?
Let me just double check.
It says, the...
Yes, they conduct a full review, but it's not to make any, we didn't ask for any updates to the LDRs as part of this RFP, but to do a review and analysis, yes, I'm sorry.
So just so that I'm clear, when I, just as we're hearing the other, the other, hearing everyone, there would be recommendations, and then the actual language would be written by someone?
Yes, initially, the thought was that we would get recommendations from a consultant, and then that staff would take those recommendations and make those, move those forward. This consultant has offered to do those, move those forward themselves on our behalf.
Okay, but, and I'm sorry, I...
You're fine.
To just, you know, get it clear in my head, but what we're asking for, maybe this is helpful for everyone here as well, is reviewing the comprehensive plan and reviewing our LDRs.
Yes.
And saying, this is what we want.
Yes.
And then if we want someone to actually write that language, this gentleman can do it, but that's a different story. We would ask someone else, or maybe someone in-house, would write the language.
It's my understanding, as part of their proposal, they're proposing to do that for us, so if you were to choose this consultant, I believe that would be part of their proposal. If another consultant were to be chosen, I don't believe that other consultants have put that as part of their proposal, so it would depend on the consultant that you choose.
Okay, Rob.
You're going to be told that those are two different projects. The comp plan is a different project than land development regulation and zoning rewrite.
However, we're asking for both of those to be reviewed and analyzed.
And I was very excited about that. We'll do more than the review and the analysis. We'll actually, I know staff can do it, but staff is busy, and we're going to help, we're going to pitch in, we're going to help them to draft that, or we'll draft it ourselves. I, every project I do, I do that, otherwise I don't feel like we're really, like, I feel like we're stopping short.
Did you have some further explanation?
I was just going to add that it's a value-added proposal, so it achieves the baseline requirement that we established, having recognized the linkage between updating our comprehensive plan and wanting and needing to make sure that our land use development regulations are up...
are updated so that we can achieve the goals that we aspire to in the updated comp plan. So, in effect, they'll be saving us both time and money, and bringing in a team with expertise to perhaps make those, uh, those changes to the ordinances even better potentially than what they might have been, and certainly at less cost to us ultimately, because we would have staff time involved, we'd have legal counsel involved in drafting ordinances and researching them, and so this element is, is an attractive option to not only achieve, again, the minimum standard, but exceed it.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Um, one question I think is kind of a, a, a really interesting one, is time. So, uh, the, the current plan that we have was, was written actually in 1999, and approved finally, uh, in 2001, and was called the 2020 Plan. So, it's exceeded its useful life by about four years. So, I'm just underscoring our need to get it done, not to put any pressure on you, of course. But, I wouldn't hold you to this, but I would just like to ask if you could give us an expectation, your best prediction about, how long would it take you to get tooled up and ready to say have the first charrette? And then how long do you expect it would take for you to present us with the first draft of a comp plan? Or would you do it in, you know, there are several different required elements under the comp plan, you know, future land use, conservation, would you do it in stages, or do, you know, give, give me an idea of an approach, and then once we've achieved that goal, then would you begin on the LDRs, or would you kind of blend the LDR presentation simultaneous with the, uh, well, you might not be able to do that till the whole thing's finished. But just, just kind of give me a, a forecast of how you would foresee us getting to the finish line.
Sure. The RFP response has a detailed, um, schedule, and it goes to about 10 months to complete the whole project. Uh, but, but again, you know, um, I would focus on this project. This would be the most important project I'd be working on. I get to work in the Keys again. Um, so we can move as fast as you're able to move. We want a substantive, you know, we want a real discussion with the public, but, but we, but I, I'm, we can focus on this in a way that other firms are not able to. I worked for a big company for 18 years. I had 15 projects, now I've got like three. Um, so we can move pretty fast. And I would actually do the discussion about the land development regulations concurrent at the same time. You know what the issues are. It's not going to take a comprehensive plan process to figure out what the issues are. And so let's start working on those solutions immediately, right from the very beginning. If we've got everybody's attention, we're calling them to the meetings, let's not just do the comp plan, let's also do the implementation.
One kind of detailed thing, I, I don't want to hold your feet to the fire, but uh, let's assume, for example, we're able to give you a decision and an award by, say, October 1st, just to pluck a number, or a date out of the air. Um, our population is at its biggest, uh, from say January to Easter time, or thereabouts.
Yeah.
So where you'd have these charrettes, it's my personal view, maybe you would agree, that the more the merrier. So we would want to have as many people here as possible to put, provide as much input and data and commentary. So, do you foresee that you would be able to get spooled up and ready to rock and roll, and get something, a, a meeting organized and presented by sometime after the, shortly after the first of the year? Or would that be pushing things?
You approve us on October 1st, I'll, I'll be here October 2nd. I mean, uh, this is our, this would be our number one priority. As fast as, as fast as you're able to move, as fast as you're able to schedule, and get the room available, and get people here, yeah, absolutely. First priority project. I, I'm, you can probably see, I'm eager to, to do this. Yeah.
We kind of got a hint to that, yeah.
Well, you, you're not a big firm, because I found in my experience, being in business for 40 years, I went to, I used some of the bigger firms, it took longer to get my stuff done, but when I found smaller firms that are like yourself, it was like they gave me service. I mean, same-day service on certain things, so.
Absolutely. Call any of our clients, that's, so, um, so, there's a team of 30 that I could bring in, but our core is four. And we're not taking on 15 projects, like I used to have, when I had 100 person, you know, I was part of a 100 person firm. Um, yes, it is, just like we say on the slide, we're midsize, we're responsive, because we're prin, principal involvement is a given. The owner of the company is going to be the one working on the stuff, and so that means not worried about, you know, going over budget or whatever. I'm, I'm worried about my reputation and doing a great job for Alamoata.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Henry, go ahead.
Can I, can I also just ask, in the interest of time, if we respectfully wrap this one up and move on to the next one pretty soon?
In a minute, yeah, I mean, we want to do the people there's only...
Absolutely, and it has been a pleasure.
Fair, fair present.
Thank you so much, it was great being here.
I think Henry had another question, I was just...
Once asked another question.
How long have you been in business?
So, uh, uh, I've been an urban planner for over 20 years. Able City, the firm that we work with, uh, has been in business for, uh, over 18 years. Um, but the Miami office just opened up six months ago, and that was me opening up the office, so I could do the projects that I'm passionate about. So, uh, Able City, if you look up the firm, Able City LLC, it's over 16 years old, is the short answer.
And you've worked, and you've worked with comp plans from beginning to finish? Where, please?
Everywhere that, wherever I've worked on a comprehensive plan, including Monroe County. So, every one of our comp plans is different in that, uh, there's an appendix which has the, uh, the recommended ordinances, the changes to the land development regulations. So you see that in all of them.
So if I were to get in my car and drive north?
Yeah.
Where should I stop first that you worked on that, that area?
Well, South Miami. I've been working in South Miami for 20 years.
South Miami is considerable.
Is a lo, is a long way away?
Yes. So it's, it's, it's not Ocean Reef.
Right.
It's not Key West, it's us.
Yeah.
And we're different.
South Miami is a town of 17,000, and we're a very close group. Um, we got big issues, you know? The Metro Rail stops in South Miami. We're trying to maintain community character. If you go to Sunset Drive and Doran Avenue, that looks a lot different than it used to, and that's been a, that's the first project I, I toured with Nuki to show her what I'm the most proud of. So go to, go to Doran Avenue in, in South Miami and see what you think.
Thank you.
That's a great question.
Hey, Rob, do you have any questions?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Jennifer, you have any questions? Or something else I was going to ask you, and I just kind of forgot about what you were, I mean, your intriguing stuff, because it, there's so many places that are redevelopment. I mean, if, that's all they are, and that's basically, you got to be creative. And, um, but I like your enthusiasm and your mangrove thing and stuff that, you know, also, but, all right, Mark, anything else before we, okay? And, and you could go to work tomorrow, basically.
Please.
All right, all right, that, you, that, that's a very good answer that you gave. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you, it was great being here.
Are you guys staying around? You're allowed, you can stay here if you want. You're allowed now to stay in the room, I think, uh, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's an open public meeting, yeah. We had just asked as a, as a professional courtesy not to come in before you had presented, so.
And to be honest, I, you know, I'd, I'd feel a little unfair if I, I don't want to make my, the people that you're going to interview are all friends of mine. I don't want to feel like I'm doing anything that's not quite right. I don't want to make them nervous. Uh, so we'll hang out. Uh, is it your intention to make the decision today, or is it going to be?
No, I, I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay.
We haven't decided when we're going to decide.
Okay.
So, but, uh, we need to do it quickly. We know that.
Absolutely. Thank you again for your time today.
I will tell you, I intend to make a decision this evening.
Really?
Yes, I do.
And your comments will be part of the public. If that's the case, then absolutely, we'll come back and we'll see you soon. Thank you, Commissioner.
I know, how much?
Okay.
Thank you.
Leave me.
Hi, folks.
No, I don't think so. I, I don't think so.
What?
These guys look like city slickers.
Yeah.
It's Calvin Giordano, and I have their proposal right here for you. I just need to get, I just need to get these ones back at the end of the night. Thank you. Are we waiting for the mayor to come back? Oh, there we go.
No, no, I just...
Okay. Mayor, you ready?
Yes, we are.
You ready?
Good evening.
Hi. Hi, everybody. Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and staff, and members of the public who are here. Um, thank you so much, first of all, for giving us the time this afternoon. Uh, we're very happy to be here. Uh, my name is Sylvia Vargas, and I'm a principal with Calvin Giordano and Associates, and on behalf of our team, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here to present to you this afternoon, and also for the opportunity to perhaps come and help you with this very important endeavor. I'm here accompanied by my colleagues, Alex...
Here.
Alex David, uh, who's the director of our Miami office, and planner Antonio Jello, uh, as well as our partner Carla Evenbach, who is going to be, uh, augmenting our team's capacity in the area of resilience and sustainability. We have a lot more people behind us. Um, we're the ones who decided to brave the traffic in coming down here. We made a very good time, uh, so we were very pleased to be able to hang out here for a little bit, but, um, we'll talk about who else is, uh, on our team a little bit later. It worked. Um, just very quickly to let you know what we're going to talk about today. Our presentation agenda includes a brief overview of the reasons why we think we are the right team to assist the village with this very important endeavor. Um, our understanding of the project charge, as we, um, as we see it laid out in the RFP, and everything that we know and we have learned, um, and how intend to tackle this challenge if we are fortunate enough to be selected. Um, and then obviously we'll open it for Q and A. So, our company, just a little bit about it, um, was founded back in 1937, so very recently, we celebrated 87, eighty, yeah, 87 years. Um, two years ago, we were having a big celebration, big milestone, 85 years of existence. Um, but, um, we started as a family-owned, family-run business, has evolved over time, grown quite a bit. We have a lot of service lines that we offer, uh, to our municipal clients. The vast majority of our clients, I would say maybe 98% are public agencies, local governments, the vast majority of them too. And we are not only multidisciplinary, but we are interdisciplinary. This is how we work. We don't, we don't just go and do different things with the different, uh, disciplines, but we work together quite a bit. So when we come for a project like this, we have pretty much all the disciplines that we need in-house, and we only bring the people that can really, uh, bring particular special expertise, like Carla, uh, who, by the way, is not just a consultant, she's a partner that we work with a lot, um, to help us with. Um, in 2018, we joined SafeBuild as one of the members of the SafeBuild family, um, and SafeBuild is a national company, uh, that specializes in municipal services. So, uh, we now have, in addition to our own capacity at CGA, uh, national reach and additional resources that can be brought to bear in situations that require it. Focused a little bit on our planning practice, um, one of the things that is very valued by our company is, um, certified planners. Um, what that means is that all of our senior staff is accredited by the American Institute of Certified Planners, or AICP, and I myself, um, I'm a fellow of the, um, American Institute of Certified Planners, which is, um, a particular honor that our profession confers. Uh, I've been around quite a long time, I guess, and, um, they thought I made some important contributions to our profession, so, um, that's a credential that I found have actually served me pretty well, uh, in the past few years, and I'm very proud of it. Um, but myself and most of our, um, senior professionals, uh, come from a background of public sector planning. I myself started my career here, in the Florida Keys, many, many, many moons ago, and I had the opportunity to work here in Alamoata, actually right after your incorporation. Um, and because we know how local government works from that side of the counter, if you will, we very well understand, uh, the pain points and the challenges that our communities, uh, face in a very, very direct way. Um, in addition, as I mentioned, we, uh, not only the company as a whole, but within the planning practice, have, uh, the great fortune of counting on a full range of, uh, expert resources that have helped us build a very, um, impressive, I would say, record of, uh, successful planning processes that result in implementable plans. What we are known for is, um, you know, we have a strong reputation for being very nimble, and for being extremely responsive. Um, and our vast experience has given us a very intimate understanding of the statutory requirements. You know, we live in a state that has a lot of rules for how comprehensive plans have to be done, and for the reviews that have to be done by the state and other agencies. We not only know that system, we navigate it really well, but we know the people in those agencies. They're not just colleagues, but they're friends. We can pick up the phone and call them and say, hey, you know, what if we did this? Do you know what would happen? You know, how would you feel about that? And we do, we do. We work very proactively with them. We also, um, have the ability to work on multiple scales, and I'm just going to say that these three items that I just highlighted is primarily what we're known for. Uh, our experience, we are known for being problem solvers. We are often the firm that gets called to fix things that have gone wrong, or things that other firms have done not so well, perhaps. We often get called to come in and fix things. And, um, and we do that with a lot of integrity and a lot of commitment to our clients. I'm not going to go through every one of these projects, but this is experience that we have that is relevant to this project. All of the comprehensive plans that we have completed, or are in the process of completing, uh, within the past five years, I would say. And the four that you see that are sort of highlighted in the lighter blue, those are comprehensive plans that have been either adopted, or have been transmitted just this month, as a matter of fact. In fact, Alex, these three guys behind me just came from one of our communities where the plan got adopted last night. So, uh, just to give you a sense of the, the vastness of our experience. Um, and often, we jump right into implementation. We have either long, long-term contracts with our clients, where we are helping them from, you know, from soup to nuts, or they call us in to, uh, continue from the comprehensive plan to the land development code, or the zoning code, or ULDC. I know this is an important part of, of your assignment here, uh, and we have a lot of experience doing that. Uh, two, three of the, um, of the communities that I highlighted in my other slide, we are starting our, uh, updates of the code, um, very shortly. In addition to that, we have experience doing other kinds of projects that are implementing tools. We have done annexation studies, we have done, uh, activation projects for corridors and downtowns. We're in work, in the middle of doing that right now in a couple of our communities. Uh, multi-model studies, uh, vision plans, uh, downtowns, I think I mentioned downtown, so, I'm going to move on. Um, and I'm going to let Carla come and talk to you about her own experience.
Hello, it's nice to meet you. Uh, just a quick introduction from me. I'm Carla Evenbach. I'm an AICP and lead green associate, certified planner with more than 20 years of experience. I also hold a position of leadership with the National American Planning Association as Chair of the Sustainable Communities Division. And so, uh, I work on, uh, climate leadership, uh, for the entire profession. Um, and on this... And on this team, what I would focus on is on the climate and community resilience aspects of the project, hand-in-hand with Sylvia and the rest of the team, to assure that these overarching considerations would be addressed throughout the project, throughout the elements as appropriate. And, you know, we would work with the environmental sustainability plan of Isla Morada, as well as the Isla Morada Matters plans as a strong basis for moving forward with even greater sustainability and resilience policy. And I think I'll be speaking a bit more later, but I have worked together with CGA on a number of recent projects. To great effect, we're a great team.
You know, we even coordinated today.
Yeah, we did. Well... So, I'll get back to some of my project experience in a minute.
All right. So, okay. I'm not going to spend too much time on organizational. I've talked a little bit how we're integrated internally and externally, but we have a whole bunch of people that are going to be behind us to assist us. But the four people that you're going to see more than anyone else when we work on this project is the four of us. We look forward to spending time down here. I can assure you that. Just very quick about me as a project manager. I've been, again, I didn't really want to say this, but over thirty years of experience now. And I started here in the Florida Keys as a development review planner for Monroe County. I was three years here, working in that, and moving to other positions, including Parks and Recreation Planner for the county. And I'll talk a little bit about more of my local experience, but, you know, like Carla, I also am very active in the leadership of our profession. I'm on the Board of Directors of the American Planning Association. And as a leader there, I have access to a lot of the resources nationally that bring us the ability to look at best practices that are being used in communities like yours for issues that may be similar to yours, that we can experiment with. And I hope that that's something that we can bring to bear here. And I mentioned our experience here, Monroe County, but then I kept coming back for other things. You know, I was part of the team that did the Monroe County, the Florida Keys Care and Capacity Study. I worked for the state for a while on some of the flyway, the Florida Forever, sorry, program. And at some point after the incorporation of Isla Morada, I got a call to come and help set up the planning department. And I, at that point, I was working on a lot of other stuff, and I really didn't want to do it, but because I knew, I knew ROGO, I knew the people at the county, they tried to convince it, to convince me, and I ended up doing it for almost a year. So, I was coming here almost every day for a long time, and I'm very proud of having had a small part in helping you get on your way. I would love the opportunity to come back and have a little bit of a homecoming. So, understanding of the assignment. You are at a really important moment in your trajectory as a community. There are lots of things that are happening with the now, what's called, not the ROGO so much here, but the building permit allocation system. You have to make decisions about that, what that's going to look like in the future. We understand that. And you have an election coming that also can change the trajectory moving forward. You have your residents who are sort of on different camps about that question. And you have a comprehensive plan that has been updated not that long ago. In fact, because you're also a young community, your plan is not that old. So, you have a little bit of a vision at the beginning of that plan. We need to look at it, not us, but your community. Look at it with your community. We serve as your facilitators to see whether that's still valid for the future, for the next twenty years or not. So, that's our next step. And beyond that, we know that some of the project goals, as Carla mentioned, is to work with a lot of the planning efforts that have been ongoing or are recent, integrating them into your policy framework for decision-making for the future, and bringing a very strong foundation of facts, data-driven, technical support. We'll talk about community engagement in a moment, but I'm going to pass it on to Carla to talk about our approach and concept to community resilience.
Again, I've worked with CGA on a number of recent projects, all of which allowed us to take a rather integrated approach to resilience. And what I mean by that is thinking about the many dimensions of that, economic, environmental, social fabric of the place. One really good example is our recent work updating the comprehensive plan of North Miami, where we were starting with a community that had fairly, fairly established sustainability and resilience policy, but we took it to the next level. We integrated really a systems-thinking approach to the process of updating the plan, looking at all the elements and how the policies relate to each other. And what we ended up with is a robust, very robust action plan of just fifty important actions for the city. Also, I've worked on Riviera Beach's comprehensive plan update, and in particular, did a very in-depth analysis of their conservation and coastal management issues. And just to point out a couple additional relevant experiences and abilities that we bring to the project, code writing. I'm currently updating the sustainable development standards for the city of Pompano Beach, targeted studies and research for the municipality. My multiple clients have hired me for a number of things. One that may be, may be more relevant to an island community like this is local seawall ordinance review that I did for the entire state of Florida. And then, finally, also, I worked with another company on updating the comprehensive plan equivalent for the Turks and Caicos, which is called their National Physical Sustainable Development Plan. And this is significant because of the, you know, the comparability of an island community and the issues that may be comparable here, shared, or overlap. For example, dealing with resilience to climate hazards such as storms or heat, the vulnerability of all kinds of infrastructure in a place that is so tied to the water, the economic and cultural dependence that we have on our natural resources in such a community, and the challenge to maintain a community quality of life into the future.
So, very quickly, I'm going to piggyback on what Carla was talking about with regards to our approach that we have been exploring of systems thinking applied to a comprehensive plan. And we think that this is a community that can benefit from that. Comprehensive plans often work in silos. The elements are, you know, you have land use and you have transportation. And even though planners intuitively know what the connections are between all of these things, when you are in the work, sometimes you forget because you're too much in the weeds. And this approach has helped us to keep that sort of high-level perspective while at the same time getting into the more detailed, fine-grained of each of the components of the system, or systems, for that matter. And so, it allows us to reframe the problems, reframe the questions to ask in order to come up with new solutions, to have good feedback loops that allow us to understand or at least explore the potential unintended consequences of decision-making. And this is something that we would really like to do here with all of you. And I'm not going to get too much into the details of our process unless you ask me to do so. It's in our proposal. But we have translated this approach and all of our experience into basically a four-stage process that we would do over the period of about a year, with, you know, one phase allowing us to do what we call mobilize for success. This is where we set our foundation for how we're going to do our public engagement, how we're going to be interacting with all of you, with your staff, with yourselves, how we're going to collect our data, what kind of data do we need, what kind of data exists, et cetera. And then, go out and simultaneously take two tracks in the second phase, which is doing the community assessment and the visioning at the same time. So, those things have to merge because one has to be feeding from the other and vice versa, and the vision has to have some grounding in reality, right? And from that, we'll go on to our next phase, which is assembling the building blocks of the comprehensive plan, creating a policy framework. It is during this phase that we will begin to do this evaluation of your, of your land development code to see where the gaps might end up being. We're not necessarily suggesting at this point that we'll take the whole code redrafting. We think that it's good to go through the policy framework creation first to see where we land, and then go into the code writing. But we will do that evaluation that will have a lot of recommendations during this stage. And if the village chooses, then we can help with the adoption process or not, because my understanding is that at this point, staff believes that they will take that on. Just very quickly, our public engagement process is fully integrated into the planning process. We don't consider the separate phase. We don't consider a separate element. We're going through each step of the process with different kinds of activities where we will be interacting with the public. It's the most important part of planning, frankly. And what we try to do is be creative and be adaptable to the specific makeup of the community, to specific needs, to specific issues, and try to make it fun and educational at all times. We do a lot of sort of gaming of comprehensive plan concepts to try and teach and to engage in a manner that is both compelling and entertaining. And finally, I mentioned that it's about a year where we're going to be working, so you can see how this is laid out approximately. Our public engagement milestone points are laid out at the very bottom. You can see that we have something going on at every stage. But we think that, obviously, this is, this was done back when we put our proposal together. We had kind of thought, well, maybe in October we'll be beginning if we are lucky to get the process. Maybe that's not going to happen, but, you know, whenever we start, it will be approximately a year. And so, with that, I'm going to close, and thank you for your patience, just to reiterate how we think we can help you. This project is fully in our wheelhouse because of our expertise in navigating the comprehensive planning process here in Florida, our vast experience working with small and particularly coastal communities, both doing projects like this or acting as the planners in those communities, embedded in those communities. Carla mentioned her coastal and island experience. I right now serve as essentially as the planning director in one island community in Miami-Dade County, very different from yours, North Bay Village. It's a community that wants growth and they want density, but they face a lot of the same challenges with sea level rise, with traffic, with a lot of these things that, you know, we're trying to address in a creative way from the resilience and sustainability perspective. And finally, you know, I think that we can help you bring your vision into focus and to connect the dots of the different pieces of this process, both from the community side, from the technical side, from the elected official side, and integrate it into a strong and actionable agenda that helps to build the local capacity for implementation. And I'm going to close with that and open it for questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, who wants to go first?
So, I was impressed with the number of South Florida cities and towns that you've worked with, and I'm sure you're familiar with the Live Local Act that the legislature passed a couple of years ago. So, I'd wonder if you could share with us any experience you've had in implementing affordable housing, especially for the communities you've worked in under the Live Local Act, the new rules.
Well, I'm going to let my colleagues speak on this as well, but we're just starting to get some serious proposals in some of the communities that we work. A lot of them have been prepared, like the city of Miami was one of, is one of our clients, and they were the first, like proactively, aside from the county, Miami-Dade County, to proactively prepare for it, right? They put in place their framework for addressing because they knew it was inevitable that they were coming. But developers are starting to look at some of the other opportunities in this island community that I mentioned. There are a number of redevelopment projects that are happening right now that have been approved already, but we knew that there was a chance that somebody was going to try to flip them and that they could become live local. So, we have been preparing for that. And sure enough, I just got the first inquiry into the project. Working very closely with the village attorney there, we have been able to make a determination that where they are looking to do this project at an extremely high height that is not actually... We were able to make the determination that the height that they want is actually not allowable because it's the one that they looked at was from a special approval. And so, it really doesn't apply, it's not the base height that we allow. And also, that the zoning district where they want to do it is not a mixed-use or industrial. So, we were able to sort of rebut that. At the same time, this is a community that has a strong workforce housing program. We have put it in place because they're getting all this redevelopment, and the community wanted to make sure that those who are trying to move there, their employees also, as well as people who already live there, have a good supply of workforce housing. So, CGA, we actually helped to craft that workforce housing program and have been implementing it. We have a housing expert on our team and grant writing and program administrator who is working with the village right now administering a workforce housing fund that has been populated with money from development agreements with developers. We have over a million and a half dollars right now in that fund that are being used to qualify applicants, local residents who are looking to either go from renters to buyers, or they have a situation where they, they are having to move for some reason. And also, utility assistance, down payment, rental assistance. So, that's a program that we have in that community going in parallel. So, we're using that also as a way to try and deflect the interest from others that are going under the workforce, I'm sorry, the live local affordable housing. We're starting to deal with that in some other of our communities. I don't know, Alex, do you want? Yeah, Alex, can you talk?
Good evening. Yes, I'm actually working on two Live Local Act projects currently in two different cities. One is a little more, I think would fit in here better, it's three stories. The other one's about twenty stories, so... But they actually changed the plans to come back in under Live Local.
So, I think that what I want to say is that every community is going to be different in how they, not only how they react to it, but also how they deal with it, right? And that we are already in the trenches doing that kind of work, but also, many of our client communities have called on us to help them do the analysis of their zoning code to determine what the framework for addressing live local is going to be.
Henry, could you... I'll ask you a question because I have a friend at the mayor in Sunny Isles and their thing with the local Larissa Shavecian, but...
Yeah, she was our client.
Okay. She, they have a big problem with Live Local because they can go in a neighborhood and buy a house and build a seventy stories tall. So, I don't know if that's just what, you know, Mark was talking about. For some people, it might be good, but for others, it might be...
Right.
Her little, that little town is, you know, there's a lot of people in a very small area.
They have set, they have set a very high bar for Live Local to provide into, but I will say this, not to correct you, but they cannot go and buy a house and put a fifty. That's, that's not really what the Live Local Act is going to do. Right now, it's limited to industrial, to commercial, and live, and mixed-use districts.
Basically, everything on the east, on the west side of Collins Avenue.
In Sunny Isles Beach, that's what it is. The east side.
No, on the west.
On the west side. On the west side.
They were just concerned about that when they were here.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, if that hasn't been done yet here, that analysis needs to happen. That's something that we certainly can help with. We have done it proactively for a lot of the communities. It's always better before somebody comes and says, hey, I'm interested in this, you know? There are all kinds of challenges that, beyond that, it's going to be very sort of nuanced. In one of the other communities where I work, there's an interest... In one of the other communities where I work, um, there's an interest in a project that just came in from an unsolicited proposal and the challenge is that it is county-owned land. And so we're inside a local government, but this land doesn't belong to them, it's not public, it's not, you know, it's public for the county, so how are we going to deal with it? We're trying to collaborate with the county to make sure that we take care of that.
Okay. So in your, y'all's working with your relationship, how is your relationship with FDOT? I mean, because we're, you know, we, we're very narrow here, so we have lots of issues with parking and all kinds of stuff, so can you-
Our relationship with all of the state agencies is actually really good.
Okay.
Um, Florida Commerce last year, Carla, last year, last week, it feels like forever. Last, uh, week Carla and I were at the planning conference in Tampa and we made a presentation on this, uh, North Miami Comprehensive Plan that we were just talking about. And the, the, the Florida Commerce Representatives for our region, both came to our session. Um, but DOT is another, um, very, uh, commonly addressed agency. In fact, a couple of days ago, we just had a, a, a conference call with the consultant to FDOT for our district who's reviewing one of our comprehensive plans and he had some questions and we were able to sit down proactively before he wrote a letter saying, oh, I have comments. And so in fact, I was just emailing with him just before I came in here because he asked me another question. He has to send a letter to the state tomorrow and we want to, the way that we operate is to try to get ahead of any problem by cooperating, coordinating with them in a proactive manner. We, I'm saying we, but actually my colleague Alex, who's been around for a long time, almost as long as I have, uh, but more here, more here in South Florida, he knows everybody, I tell you that.
So you have a relationship with Speaker Perez, incoming speaker, I'm sure.
No, I do not.
No?
No, but, um, we know, we know all the, all the, I think we know the right people to go to. And if we don't, we know somebody who will know.
Okay, okay.
It, it's not just state and local, I mean, it is local agencies. I wanted to also expand on that. Any, you know, you, you, obviously you're in Monroe County. There is a lot of coordination with Monroe County. We do work with District Six, which is our FDOT district.
Sure.
And as we said, every other state agency, um, we could pick up the phone, call them and they actually call us back. So that's what we would offer.
Okay. I, I have been to a lot of those meetings, like the Palmetto Bay invited me to their coastal resiliency-
Another client of ours.
The mayor there, so-
I'm the interim planning director there now.
Okay, alright. And Nick's their manager.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So anyways.
Just real, last quick question, you guys seem super busy. Are you going to have time for us?
Well, yes, and I'm going to tell you why. I was just actually, it's funny because we all came in here, like all our little consultant groups and we were like, ah, hi, hi, because we all know each other. We were like joking about having happy hour over there while we waited. Um, but, um, we, we did not, not yet. Um, uh, but, um, I was just telling one of my colleagues over there that I just so happened to be at a kind of, uh, tipping point where many of my projects are sort of slowing down because I'm almost done. And so I'm looking for my next challenge. I'm looking for my next, uh, project that I'm going to, you know, look, uh, to apply the system thinking. Um, and like I said, we have a lot of, um, backup. Uh, it's not just the four of us planners, we have other planners that we can bring to bear. Um, and, uh, we are, we are very agile in the way that we work. So I, I can commit to you that we have the time and I will make the time myself.
Okay, thank you. Sharon? No, Henry?
I'm very comfortable with your past with the county and, and I'm sure you're very, um, comfortable with Ms. Miller and Area Six in the state and all that. Are you all traveling together in the same car?
Today we are.
Today?
So far.
Okay.
Today we are.
I'm kind of interested in what you told your colleagues with your background with the county and with Alamo Rada, et cetera, et cetera, and the trip.
Well, I have to confess that it was a little bit of a, a memory lane kind of trip. Um, I, I come here as often as I can. I live in South Miami, so it's not too, too long a trip for me. But today I was like, oh, look, I used to go there and I used to be here. And I, I told them, turn here, turn here. I used to live at Mount Market 105 and I told them, turn here, Bowen Drive. I lived at 29 Bowen Drive and we went over there and we looked at the house and Alex was like, oh, I think my sister was here not very long ago. Let's go to this other street. Um, I made them look at the county, but is now the county complex, just a mile from here. That was my office. Um, and I used to, you know, I worked there for a couple of years and then I moved to the Marathon, uh, headquarters of the county, uh, when I became the President of Recreation Planner. So I drove through essentially Isla Morada every single day, back and forth. Uh, for me as a young planner, it was both a dream job to be here as well as a little bit of a nightmare because it was very intense. Um, and the county churned people out. I'm sure I don't have to tell you that. Uh, they churned them out like that. I mean, I was here one year and I already was like the most senior person in the staff. But when I came back here for, um, after your incorporation, um, I felt really comfortable, you know? Obviously it was very challenging. We were just beginning, it was chaos. Um, and things I'm sure have evolved a lot. You guys are a full-blown community, you have Founder's Park, my goodness, this was just a seed when I was here. And I didn't get to stay long enough to see it while I was working here. Uh, and every time I come here, I am amazed at what this village has accomplished in such a short time. The fact that you have your central sewer system, that's unbelievable to me. It's, you know, um, so I'm always very impressed with, it's like the, the little, the little village that could, right? Um, and this is why the opportunity to help you with this comprehensive plan is really exciting to me because I see the next, sort of the next generation of challenges that I know we can help you with, so.
Do you on occasion talk to Rebecca?
Rebecca Jettin?
Yes.
I don't talk to her often enough, but I, I know where to find her and I know that she was down here, um, helping you evaluate your, um, your, um, your consultants, I believe, right? So I watched the meeting.
She was part of the meeting, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Rebecca and I go a long way, but then again, I, I go a long way now with a lot of people. Um, yes.
I'll say thank you.
Please say hello to her.
I will.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, I, I have a, a little story. I'm sorry to be a storyteller, but it's relevant to the decision you'd make. So, um, Alamo Rada voted to incorporate with the election in the fall of 1997 and what we voted on was a law that, that incorporated us and the effective date of that was December 31st of 1997. That's our birthday.
Right.
And so as soon as that happened, uh, the county refused to work on any projects in Alamo Rada because they were out.
Yep.
So if you had a pending building permit, as I did, I had three affordable housing permits that I was processing, uh, you were no longer able to get anything done because when you'd go to the building department, and I think Don would remember this, uh, they would simply tell you, go talk to the village. And we would say, well, they don't even have an office yet. And they would say, well, you should have thought about that when you voted. And so it took several months to, for Alamo Rada to get, uh, a phone number and a place to operate and to get some people here. And so, uh, I had, uh, we had a situation where if you were in Rogo, uh, you couldn't move forward and, and you couldn't do anything and there was nobody here to talk to. So everybody called that Rogo limbo. So I was in Rogo limbo for about 10 months. And so ultimately the village got a place to, to function and it used to be the dry cleaner down there, uh, where, I don't even know what it is.
Across from South State now.
Yes, yes. They've torn so many things down. I don't know what it's, it's there now. And, uh, so there was these crappy little offices and, and, uh, at any rate, Sylvia was our very first planning director. She was number one. She was here on day one when we opened up. And I remember going into her office and, and pleading and, and there was a line of people and, you know-
You cried, I cried probably too.
Uh, we, we may have wound up at Holiday Isle at the, uh, tiki bar to drown those sorrows, but at any rate, uh, you were part of our early history and our-
I was.
Our infancy.
I'm very proud of that. I mean, um, I do remember that phone call when I was told, there's a pile this high of Rogo applications and we need somebody to come and help us do it and you know the people at the county. And I actually, you know, I, it's like I knew I could work with Don and, and all the other people there. And, uh, so, yeah, we came down, we, we created forms, we created systems, we got through the backlog and, and then, you know, I wrote down, I wrote the, uh, job description for your next, uh, planning director and, and I said, okay, this is it, you hire somebody and I'm out.
Well, you got us started and you got us off to a very good start.
Thank you, thank you. I'm glad you remember it that way.
I, I, I think that's, uh, uh, relevant to what we're doing here today. Now, on a personal level, it's interesting for me to look across the room and see our very first planning director and our most recent planning director. And I'm, I'm at the end of my term. I'm going to be out in November and, uh, sunset on my political career, but I feel like, uh, speaking to you and, and the others, you know, we're, I'm going to leave things in very good hands going forward, but it does make me feel very old to-
Me too.
I was 29 years old when that happened.
I didn't want to say how long ago that was, but just to kind of end with a little personal anecdote relating to that. When I got the call, it was 1998, you guys had been incorporated for a little bit. And I started coming here, I think around March, maybe. I had just gotten married and sometimes I was so tired that my husband had to drive me down here and drop me off and then come and pick me up at the end of the day. Uh, because, you know, I had, I was like, I'm only going to work there two days a week because I had other things going on. And it ended up being two days here and two days over there. It was so intense that sometimes I would fall asleep, you know, I, I was afraid of actually having an accident driving, you know, on US 1. So my husband also remembers those days pretty fondly.
Well, you, you know, you, you had a lot of anxious people, angry people, excited people, a stack of work, an incredible workload and no one to turn to for help. And you handled that all well and you, you handed it off. I think Cheryl Bauer was your successor.
That's right.
And, uh, got us started and we, this place came along not so long after that, so, uh, it's nice to see you here at the end, uh, when we met first at the beginning and, uh, hope we see you more. So thank you.
You too. Thank you so much. I really appreciate, uh, the opportunity. Any other questions before we let the rest?
Counsel, any other questions? I don't, I reckon not.
Alright.
Thank you so much for coming in your time.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Alright.
I'll get it, I'll get a copy of it. Does anybody need a bathroom break?
I'll take another copy again.
Here, let me ask, tell Jennifer, here, hold, hold on, let me, I'll, I'll give that. Hey. Can, can we get a copy of this ourselves? Is it, do we have?
They, they are online, we don't have, um, I can probably make copies if you want. You want just that one specifically?
Okay, Chen Moore's the next? Alright. I don't think, I don't think we know this, I don't think we know this lady.
You've never seen her before, have you?
No.
You work with Chen Moore, Erin?
I am a team with them.
Oh, you are? Okay. Yeah. I'm trying to think of the guy's name that worked for Aqueduct with Chen Moore, many, um, oh man, I'll think of him in a minute.
Reward working for Rachel gets by her.
Reward working for Rachel gets by her.
Oh!
This is, she got the pants and it's like, that's his best shoes.
There you go.
How you doing?
I'm good.
Good to see you.
I'm trying, I'm very good friends with a guy that used to work with Chen, for Aqueduct. They, they did a lot of work for Aqueduct.
Hey, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Ready?
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Nilsa Zacharias, Director of Planning for Chen Moore and Associates. Mr. Mayor, council members, we are thrilled to be here with this opportunity to present. I thought that was amazing that the council decided to move forward with the presentation. Let me just, uh... You have seen the proposal, the RFP. This presentation will focus on three key points. How is our team assisting your village to reach its community goals? What is our approach? And why we are the best team to prepare your comprehensive plan? And, uh, with me today, I also would like to introduce, uh, Erin Diddy. She's, you know her, she's a land use attorney and a certified planner. We are going to assist the village to, uh, to reach your community goals because, and the most important thing, we understand how your commitment to enhancing the, uh, the life of the residents, the quality of life of your residents, supporting your business community, protecting the natural environment and providing resiliency and flooding strategies. Also, we are going to assist you to reach out your community goals because we understand the, the, the key issues of the area of critical state concern. Our team has worked for many years in, in the Keys and specifically in Isla Morada. We also understand how critical is the hurricane evacuation planning, the BPAS, and specifically affordable housing. We understand affordable housing is one of the most important issues throughout, uh, Isla Morada, the Keys and Florida. And mainly, our key element is that we are proposing a robust citizen forum and public engagement program. That, that program will be based on your village, will be based on your input and the needs of the village. Please.
So one of the biggest things about growth management in Monroe County and the Keys overall is knowing the community. You have a very unique growth management system with state oversight, um, so we don't have a tremendous learning curve here. I've been doing work in the Keys since 2010. I currently have projects in every jurisdiction in the Keys, including the, the village of Isla Morada. Um, and we have recently completed your vulnerability assessment and your CRS watershed management plan. So we have access to a tremendous amount of data already about your infrastructure and what some of your priorities are with regard to adaptation and resiliency overall. Currently, we are on the team conducting the stormwater master plan update and the municipal road elevation project. The- and the municipal road elevation project. The municipal road elevation project is teamed with all of the jurisdictions within the Keys right now. Our experience in the Keys is current. It's not 10 years ago. It's not just with one jurisdiction in the county. We know that, you know, there are issues that have evolved between the county and the jurisdiction, specifically for Isla Morada, and we would be working to that end. We will deliver a plan that's based on these up-to-date planning efforts and we will already have a head start on them because we have that data collection. So again, I've started with projects in the county in 2010 and the previous Isla Morada Matters Plan from 2015 to 2016, I actually authored that first sustainability plan for the village. So when you look at these teams, the approach to updating a comprehensive plan is not rocket science. Everybody's going to pretty much have the same approach. They're going to collect the data. There's going to be a citizen engagement component of it. They will update the data and analysis, develop the goals, objectives and policies, go through the review and approval process, transmit it to the state and address any comments along the way. So that's not going to be rocket science. Where we are differentiating ourselves is that we already do have a head start on that data collection and the data and analysis that will support the goals, objectives and policies and we're familiar with a lot of the efforts that you already have ongoing. The other thing is communication. Communication is really key. We will work on a meeting strategy with you and with your team that makes sense for you, whether it's weekly or bi-weekly meetings. I do want to hit that data collection piece really hard because we have collected already all of your infrastructure data about your stormwater system, your capital projects. Nilsa leads the rest of the elements of the comprehensive plan in terms of demographics, other related efforts and updating the data and analysis. And then we would use that existing project data that we already have. So we feel that that is going to give us an edge because that data's already been collected for use in the project.
To ensure a successful comprehensive plan update is paramount to have the community input. Your comprehensive plan will be based on the vision and shared values of the community. And we, our team is proposing a robust citizen forum and public engagement process. To trigger the public participation, we are offering to brand this initiative. And when I say branding, I'm referring, we are going to prepare a poster. We are going to prepare a survey. That survey will be on a QR code that people can answer through their phone. And I really would like I would like to show you, this poster was for a master plan. And look at here, we included the QR codes where people can answer the survey. And this can be done, in this case, the community asks us in three languages, English, Creole and Spanish. So, and that's what I said, that is critical that we work with all of you, we work with your staff to define, to determine what kind of robust community participation. So also, as part of this process, it was the same project, we prepare business cards. So whenever we are with the public, we'll provide this business card with a QR code so they can answer the survey. And also, as the slide shows, we are proposing to have interviews one-on-one with community groups, charades, public meetings with the stakeholders, kiosk. I really put a lot of emphasis on kiosk. Kiosk is where if the village is having an event, Fourth of July or the Green Market, we will go there with a little tent and a little table and we will engage with the public. We will provide these cards where they can submit the survey, they can answer the question. We will engage with the community where they are. And then also, if anybody needs a bilingual survey, podemos hacer eso en español también. So, and definitely, we trust and strong social media and online presence. The step three, as Erin mentioned, and this is a very logical step, we are going to review each of your existing comprehensive plan elements. I have more than 25 years of experience. I have done many comprehensive plans. And in fact, I brought two documents that I will pass around because I believe that it's important for you to see how is the final product will look. And then, one of the things that Erin and I are proposing is a new resiliency element. And we believe we are the only team proposing a new element. It's an optional element if the council would like to proceed with that. And again, the step four is, once we prepare all of these, we will have a draft. And by working closely with the staff, we will provide the draft, we will look for comments, we will update those documents. And then, we will have workshops with all of you, with the LPA board, with any other board also. As you see these photos, we understand what are the challenges that this village have. Finally, when we are ready to transmit to the state, we have years of experience and we truly know the Florida statutes. We will accompany this process to the final adoption. If there are comments from the state, we will accompany that and provide any answer that the state might need. I believe this is one of the most important slides. Why we are the best team to provide you the successful comprehensive plan. As you notice, we have years of experience and we are proficient in the Keys and specifically with Isla Morada. And then also, we have proven track record of successful plan. In the RFP, you ask to provide references. We provided references and we also have documents here to show you how much do we know about it. And look at this org chart. We have here engineers, we have environmentalists, we have mainly our amazing partnership with Erin Diddy. And with regard to this, I wanted just to highlight some of the team members. Again, I'm Nilsa. I have a bachelor degree in architecture and a master's degree as a Fulbright Scholar from Iowa State University. My master's degree is in community and regional planning. And I have more than 25 years of planning and comprehensive plan experience. Also, as part of the team is Mr. Osnia Leon. He's the principal planner. He's proficient in anything related with citizen forum and Florida statutes. Suzanne Daubraski, she's a civil engineer and her expertise is in utility drainage and roadway projects. And Mr. Ben Lehrer, he's also a director of transportation and his input and credentials will be critical for the development of the transportation element.
Once again, Erin from Delray Beach, but I'm down here working in the Keys quite often. I'm a certified land planner and my undergrad degree is marine science. And I'm also an attorney. And we have worked on several comprehensive plan projects together. So Nilsa and I were pretty complementary with each other.
I just wanted to also mention who are we. We are a part of Chen Moore and Associates. It's a company that has been created in 1986. We are currently more than 150 full-time employees and has engineers, landscape architects, water resource engineers, environmental specialists, obviously a planning division. And then, as I mentioned, and I will pass around the plans, we have prepared many comprehensive plan, successful one, in our partnership with Erin Diddy.
So this isn't Nilsa calling me and knocking on my door saying, "Hey, do you want to go after this project together? We've never really worked together before. Let's see what works." Nilsa and I recently completed the City of Dania Beach's comprehensive plan. It was a full rewrite of the comp plan. It was a pretty complicated jurisdiction. They had a lot of issues. They had coastal issues. They had a tremendous amount of growth that was occurring around the Dania Point project. We also recently completed, just this Monday, a stormwater assessment program for the town of Liantana. And we wrote a first-of-its-kind ordinance that created an assessment program for both stormwater projects and tidal flooding projects. I think that ordinance is going to end up being a model for funding strategies when we're starting to deal with some of these tidal flooding projects. I've written comprehensive plan language for the county. I wrote their energy and climate element of their comp plan. I just recently finished the peril of flood amendments in the coastal element for Key Colony Beach. I'm about to start on Layton. And I'm working on other comprehensive plan and code language to implement the roads elevation program for the county to look at design standards and level of service, particularly with regard to stormwater management. I've written two successful grants for the Village of Isla Morada already for the vulnerability assessment and the watershed management plan. We submitted two others by September 1st that were multi-jurisdictional in nature for adaptation planning. So far, I've secured about $60 million for projects within the greater Monroe County area. And I think that is important to note because part of what you do in your comp plan update right now, knowing that the funding climate is relying on a lot of grant funding from state and federal entities, is you want to be able to issue spot and have certain goals, objectives and policies within your comp plan that can potentially set you up for some of these granting opportunities. So because of all of these efforts, we really feel like we kind of have a head start. And I can tell you, kind of viewing the comprehensive plan in the code as an opportunity for funding strategies really does result in benefits to the local community.
The document, the final document that you will receive will be graphically driven and easy read format. In fact, I'm passing around those documents that you can see that they were organized in a sense, in a way that the public will be, is a go-to document rather than just being on a shelf collecting dust. So it will provide an effective implementation, serves as a roadmap for aligning future village initiatives and projects. It will be written in simplified, straightforward policy language. And also, it will be free of conflicting policy language. Your comprehensive plan needs to be your go-to document. It should be, it should not be unattainable. It should be approachable, easy to read. And that's the reason, the document that you have in front of you going around, passing around, you will see that we even use color coded. So it will be easy to find which element would you like to read. We believe this table summarizes why we are the best company to work with you and to provide you a successful comprehensive plan. We are the best qualified team. We have expertise and experience working in Isla Morada and in the Keys. Our project approach and community participation are paramount. We know that a successful comp plan must be based on the community input. Also, we have the resources, personnel and availability to deliver the plan as requested in the RFP in 12 months. Our professional fee is $150,000. And again, we provided references. Other clients that we work with, they are part of the RFP. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present and we are here to answer any question.
Counsel, anybody have any questions?
I do have a quick question. So would it be you two primarily leading the engagement with the community?
Yes. Yes, myself and also I presented other person of the team. The community engagement will have different activities, different events. So, but mainly will be Erin, myself and also our principal planner, Osnia Leon, which I showed his photo.
No. No. It was a good presentation.
I also would like to pass around the little cards. I love these cards and people. When we are around on the kiosk, they just, they take the card, they scan on their phone and they answer the survey.
So I have a question. The one you just did for Dania Beach, did you deal with AJ? AJ's the mayor of Dania Beach, correct?
The one for Dania Beach was already adopted and transmitted to the state. And actually, last week was the state issued a notice in compliance.
I know he's, I know who he is personally very well because he sits on a board with me, so. Anyways, he came here when we did our veterans thing. He came down for that. Yeah, very young guy. And they also have
Very young, yeah.
During anti-Semitism conference, we visited, they have the Holocaust museum there. So it's a very neat place.
CMA has been working in Dania Beach for many years. We also provide engineering service. Jennifer Smith, she's the engineer from CMA that works with the Public Works Department.
I don't have any questions. You guys have any questions? I mean, I've known Erin for a long time. Okay, I think we're, Rob Cole, you have any questions, Mr. Cole?
I do not. Thank you, Mayor.
About Jennifer? No, we're good? Mr. Quick? Okay, all right. Thank you so much. And Erin, it's always good to see you. Can I make a pit stop?
Sure, sure.
You guys need help getting some of that stuff out of here? Do we need to take a break for two minutes, five minutes or something? Okay. Got one more, huh? I think Jennifer went to get them. She was good friends with a friend of ours, John Hankinson, who was, he was the head of the EPA for Southeast United States. He was the head of the Gulf Cleanup, VP Horizon. We are, we're there, ready. Good evening.
Good evening. So, again, good evening and thank you for having us here tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to come talk with you. My name is Jared Beck. I am the project manager with Inspire. And I'm joined today by Pat Tyuski, who is our comprehensive plan leader, as well as by Christina Miller, who is a planner. She's an architect. She's also an urban designer, as well as by Jessica Hayes, who is one of our GIS leads and works with us on a range of projects from our VAs to our comprehensive plans. So as I said, we're really happy to be here. And we're also very happy that you are undertaking this very important process for your community in updating your comprehensive plan. We recognize that as a smaller community, you may not be as impacted by some of the accelerated population growth that many jurisdictions in Florida are. But you are impacted by many other things, including the three-plus-million tourists that pass through your community. I'm so excited talking, I'm not even clicking. By the three-plus-million tourists that pass through your community. And while that does have positive economic impact, it does also take a toll on your infrastructure as well as create those potential concerns or hazards when you do have the times that you need to be evacuating. you need to be evacuating. Also, as an area of critical state concern, we all recognize, being South Florida folks, that the increasing intensity and frequency of storm events, the impact that will have on our quality of lives, on our communities, our economy, and our infrastructure is also going to continue. It is because of those reasons that a comprehensive plan and starting a new one or an update be a very clear, policy-driven, long-range document that is meaningful for each community that clearly articulates the community visions, the wants, and is one that is succinct, it is actionable, and it is user-friendly for all. Now, there are other reasons why you're doing this update, you know, among those being that there are recent state changes to the legislation related to comprehensive plans, things like your 10- and 20-year horizon, as well as updating your DNA, which is overdue. You've also recently completed over the last couple of years, some really important, meaningful planning documents and tools, more recently, your VA. We also recognize that in addition to that and incorporating these studies, the plans, the documents into meaningful ways that do have that longer-term impact in your community, there is that value in having a very community-driven process, the community vision, and embracing it in a way and developing it in a way that is meaningful not just for you all as the policymakers, for staff, but as well as for your community to see and understand, be a part of, and support. With that, what I'd like to do, as I've given that maybe long introduction, is have Pat Speedick a little bit more about the experience that Inspire has and why we want to do this for you.
So the three pictures that you see on the screen are the core group that would be working on this or leading this effort. Now, behind us, you can see the whole team, the Inspire team. So we have a lot of other people that will be working on this project. Now, Inspire is pretty new. The company was created about a year and a half ago, but it was a spin-off from another company. But in reality, this group has been in business for 24 years, and I have been with it for 24 years. Throughout that time, we have worked on mainly public sector projects. When we spun off from the previous company, it was amazing because we didn't even have the perception of having conflict of, conflicts of interest because we just don't do the private side. Now, in those 24 years, we have worked on many comprehensive planning projects, and you can see on the slide, we have done 63 so far, comprehensive planning projects. And I'm going to show you this slide, just a sample of the latest ones that we have completed or that are working on, and the ones that are still bright on your screen are all coastal communities. So that's basically what we have worked in the past five years. Now, having worked in other places, having done comprehensive plans, it's only one part of the equation, right? Because we're not going to bring a cookie cutter comprehensive plan to you. We need to be aware, know, be familiar with the local issues. So just to give an idea of what we have seen, what we know about the community. Climate change and resiliency, yeah, everybody's dealing with that. But here in Isla Morada, multiply that exponentially because you're exposed a lot more than many of the other communities. We have issues with housing and the BPAS system. You're limited on how many building permits you can issue per year. People want to live here, but there are certain restrictions that we have to have in place. Why? Because we want to protect the people and the environment. There has to be environmental stewardship to preserve the, the village. Jared talked a little bit about transportation. All the other companies that we have worked on, we have a whole network, dealing with the county collectors, the state roadways. Here we know you have US1. That's your life and, you know, of the community. That's how you get in, how you get out. And in emergencies, that's the only way you can get out. So that's something that we have to be aware of. And the whole thing is creating a sustainable environment. People live here, they love it here, they want to stay here, but they want to be safe, and they want to be able to have a high quality of life. And the most important thing is preserving that uniqueness of the barrier island. So the other thing in terms of experience, having done this in many other communities, we always know there are studies that have been done. So we know you went through the vulnerability assessment already. We don't need to dig into that. What we need to do is take all those past studies, all those reports that have been written, check the recommendations. What are they telling us that we need to do? What needs to go into the comprehensive plan? Sort them out and put them where they need to be. So I'm going to pass it back to Jared to talk a little bit about our public engagement.
Excellent. Pat had mentioned within the last couple of years, Inspire spun off of another practice. And there were a couple of reasons specific to that. One of them is that, as we've mentioned, we're planners, landscape architects, you know, there's a real focus on doing amazing quality planning work that's meaningful to the communities we serve. Most of us have been in staff's position before, we understand what it is in both sides. The second part of that is that while everyone will talk about community engagement, we are absolutely passionate about it and do it in a way that we feel is particularly meaningful in communities. Now, there's a lot that could be done and a lot that could cover in a lot less, or a lot more time than what we have today. But just a couple of them, and I'm going to speak one to the technology side, which we all expect is project websites that are branded to your community, branded to the projects. You know, we have tried various platforms over the years, Engagement HQ and MetroQuest, and really digging in into the way that we could do the best that there is, bring the best that there is to the communities. So we've settled the last couple of years and been really excited with a program called Social Pinpoint. There are aspects and elements of it that provide the regular updates and information that you would expect on a, a, a social platform or the website as an information portal, but also things like hosting your data, putting your studies, recording videos, and having the information and content that folks can view. We do believe in making an interactive process regardless of where people are. We understand the communities and the seasonality at times that can occur, or those that just don't have the ability to participate in person. So things like interactive maps that allow people to go in and pinpoint their hotspots or critical areas or thoughts or ideas, but doing it in a way that also allows the other residents or the other participants to be able to see those, to comment on them. And not only does it give an easy platform for people to be involved or share their input, but it exposes people to the other views and thoughts and ideas of what your community is sharing. And then doing things like idea walls. We love to post specific topic contents, transportation, environmental, housing. It's another mechanism for the community to start having dialogue and have that exposure to what other people think, as well as have the ability to add in other thoughts. That's just one of the tools that we use in terms of the digital engagement. I've been doing this for 25 years, and I think that there's nothing that replaces that public person or that in-person interaction. So we really do place an emphasis on that. And whether it's more conventional workshops or roundtable discussions to attending community festivals or sports events, we put a great deal of effort in going into the places where we have the opportunity to have those conversations. We like to program a wide variety of activities. We do like to include things that are educational components, so people understand what a comprehensive plan is, why we're doing it, how this impacts your community, what that longer-term impact is, to things like roundtable discussions all the way to Lego building blocks, so people understand what the, the form looks like of an environment, or Plinko games, for example, and this one is to entertain and get, get kids involved and excited. This, just again, one of the samples of some of the in-person types of, of activities we do, but we also want to again, make sure that you all, whether it is the policymakers, the elected officials, staff, really have a role in helping be sure that people are engaged. So, you know, among the many different tools that we do are create things like business cards with QR codes that you all can pass out and take along with you to leave behind so that anyone can just, with the click of their phone, be up to date on what is occurring with the project, how they can get involved, participate in things like surveys, do all of the online mapping and the inputs, which the reason we use the programs we do is because they're so user-friendly on any device. One of the other things with this and, and that we think is really important as we go through the process is that communication be exceptional in the way that we do it, that everything be perfectly transparent to your community so there are no questions. And again, a reason why we use some of the platforms we do is the export and data analysis is so clear and it's user-friendly and it's easy for anyone to be able to see really at any time. We do incidentally have at the end of our PowerPoint during the Q and A, if you'd like to see, a couple samples of what these sites, sites can look like. So with that, I'll ask Pat to speak about, after this, what does it start to look like in a plan?
So because we have worked so many years on comprehensive plan, we have seen the evolution. I date back to the 80s when the growth management law came into effect and we started preparing these massive, convoluted, complicated comprehensive plans. And we have seen the evolution, how we have become more creative, how we want these documents to be used by staff, by the policymakers, by the community. So I'm going to talk about, you know, what we do to, to make them more user-friendly and actionable. So this is just one example of a vision plan that we prepared for Pasco County in preparation of their comprehensive plan. You can see from the document that it's very user-friendly, it's very easy to read the information. We all know that the attention span has diminished to a very small, very short time. So with these graphics, we get people's attention. So we like our documents to be modern, concise, and engaging. We have an amazing team working on GIS, and Jess leads that team. And GIS is awesome. It's not just to prepare maps, all the analytics that come with it, all the, you know, identifying trends, identifying challenges, and coming up with solutions. So we have a robust team helping with that. And then from there, we go to our graphic designers team, and that's something that not every planning firm has one of these. They have elevated our products to an unimaginable level when we started. They will take these GIS maps and put them in the reports in a way that people can really understand what it is that we're talking about. When it comes to GOPs, the goals and objectives and policies, in the old days, it was like a competition. Let's see who can make the GOPs the longest. And what we have done in the past probably 10 years is trim, 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 streamline, organize by topics, you know, put, lay it out on the page in a way that is easier to understand. Example on the left is Green Cove Springs. It's the future land use element, it's your goals and objectives and policies. When you talk about future land use categories, it should not just be the yellow or the red that you see on a two-dimensional map, it should be three-dimensional, what it's not going to look like, you know, for the common citizen to understand. The document on the right, it's to show the process. So in Pasco County, we worked with the community on developing all these goals and objectives and policies. So with them, we didn't want to talk about GOPs. It was more like, what are the issues? What, what strategies would you use to address the environment or to address housing? So we work with the community on drafting these goals, objectives, and policies. And then we have the capacity to do handouts and, you know, things that can help the community understand the process a little bit better. Something that we started doing about five years ago, I think, it's developing these goals and objectives and policies kind of like in an action plan format. So you list all the policies, and next to it, you will say like, this is a short-term policy, or this is an ongoing thing that you have to do. We also talk about like, who would be responsible for that implementation? Is it the planning commission? Is it the city commission? Is it the, the citizens? Is it an agency? Is it the state? You know, who, who gets involved? And then the last column, it was our way to let the community know that that policy is implementing those portions of the vision that they worked on so hard. Is this related to the environment? Is it related to infrastructure? Is it related to utilities? So people start understanding all these words, what they really mean. We included a picture of the schedule, we're not going to go through it, but we have it there in case you have any questions and we can go back to it.
So, and in closing for the presentation, a couple of comments on why we feel like we are a good fit for Isla Morada. One is the breadth of work. Pat had shared with you earlier that our team has completed 63 comprehensive plans. I don't think there's another firm in Florida that's done that much. And it's not just the number, but it's the exposure to the types of communities, the issues, the nuances that are faced with that, and how we integrate these in meaningful ways within the work that we do so that you have, again, that tool that is very meaningful and purposeful for your community. The second is the approach. Everyone will talk about community engagement. I hope I enlightened you a bit on our view and having a very community-driven process. I would say also that we, many of us have been in staff's position. We understand the importance from that practical implementation standpoint of what these comprehensive plans mean, how they dial into the other plans and the work that we have to do as a city. So we understand really the, the approach in doing this in a way that does have that meaningful input. And then the last is, is the actionable plans. It is showing that community, your community, that everything that they brought forward, all of those things that we've talked about are getting put into that meaningful document and that they're in a way that your community can understand them and see them as a tool. Again, it's, it's not just for residents, but anyone that does come to, to look at your community, businesses, prospective folks, it is something that's meaningful. So we're really excited to be here tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit more about Inspire, and we'll be glad to answer any questions or further discussion.
Counsel, any questions? Go ahead, Mark.
I have two, very good presentation, by the way, and impressive staff. Two questions. One, and I'm going to say them both and then let you answer both. Have you done much work in an area, a municipality or county of an area of critical state concern? And I already forgot the second one. Maybe you should answer that and I'll, it'll probably come back. It's been a long day.
Yes, we have. And the city of Mascot is in, near Orlando. We did work for them, area of critical state concern. We're doing work in Miami-Dade, some of the redevelopment work. Northport, I think it's also within an area of critical state concern. So, so yeah, we have had to, to deal with this very specifics from the legislature in terms of what you need to address.
Okay. Mark?
I remembered my second question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And forgive me, I didn't review the RFP carefully, or if I did, I don't remember that either. But does your proposal include, of course, the comp plan, but also the land development regulations? Or is that something extra? If so, can you speak about that a little bit?
It was, it's just a comprehensive plan. And one item that I wanted to just clarify since you asked a question, one of the addendums that was issued, it stated that staff would take the plan through adoption, so we put that as an optional element. We would be glad to include that. You know, we typically take it through adoption and state comments and, and all that, but that's why we put it as optional, because we didn't know if staff wanted to do that. But it is very common to have contracts where we do the comprehensive plan and immediately go into the land development regulations. We just finished, I have a hearing next Thursday with Palm Bay. We did the vision, the comprehensive plan, and went straight into the land development regulations, also for Sumter County. Comp plan, immediate, because typically what, what you have is, once you adopt your comprehensive plan, you have 12 months to adopt your regulations to make them consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, I have a question for you. You, I noticed when you had your thing up there saying where you'd worked, okay, I saw St. John's County, saw Flagler County, I saw Green Cove Springs, that's in Clay County. Do you guys work with the Northeast Florida Regional Commission, Planning Commission? What, the, the company's out of Miami, but are, are you the physical team that worked up there?
We have done work-
Because that's a very dense area right now with Shan's Bridge coming in, you know, the new bridge they're putting in.
Yes, we, it was 2020 when we started doing work with the city of Green Cove Springs. So their first task was to do their comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And we completed that one. And yeah, we had to address the, the, the transportation changes and challenges that were coming with that. Then after that, they hired us to do a downtown master plan for them. And then after that, they hired us to do a form-based code for the downtown. And it has been one of those relationships where it was not a continuing services agreement where you can just call the consultant and they keep doing their work. Every single time, it was a request for proposals, and they selected us, request. So, I mean-
Okay, how long ago in St. John's County?
That one is actively going on right now.
That is going on right now? What about Flagler?
Flagler is also going on right now. And Jess can tell us exactly where we are with each one of them because she has been working on those two.
Okay. But you guys are out of the, out of the Miami office or working, they're hiring you?
No, we're, we're, the headquarters are in Orlando. So I am in the Orlando office. Christina and Jared are in the Miami office. We also have offices in Tampa and North Carolina, and Boston and Atlanta.
Okay, all right. I didn't, okay, cool. All right. Thank you, because that area is, like I said, it's, I mean, there's so many creative things going on at that. I was at the Regional Planning Commission meeting in January up there, and it was, I mean, the stuff they are doing up there is phenomenal. The CRAs, which, I mean, they're, they're, the redevelopment projects are just, you know, I heard of one today that kind of proved, actually, the, the feds are going to do a thing on the St. John's River. They're going to pay for this to be done. It's called a Blue Way, you know, where you can go canoeing and kayaking and stuff, but-
I was going to mention, we have actually worked on the CRAs for the city of St. Augustine.
Okay. All right, awesome. Okay, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Could you just, I'm a little confused by the, the longevity of your group, but then also, I think you just said you were, you've been in business for a year or so. Could you help me understand that?
I'll tell you the story because I've lived through the whole thing. So I started working with this company that used to be called Land Design Innovations. This was in the year 2000, and the company was one year old. We grew up to 12 people. In 2011, we were acquired by a- In 2011, we were acquired by an engineering firm from Tennessee, and we grew up to 110 people. 2015, SNME from North Carolina, soils and materials engineering, acquired us. We grew up to like 1,100 people. And we worked from 2015 until 2022 in that capacity, and the company decided to reorganize, and it was just not going to work for the planning and landscape architecture groups, because we had people all over the place, and all of a sudden, they were going to have bosses that were engineers, not really planners. So at that point, our boss, George Kramer, decided to create Inspire Place Making, and we acquired the planning and landscape architecture groups from SNME. So SNME does not have any planning or landscape architecture anymore. We kind of came out with all the clients, the projects. So I have been working, for example, for the city of Melbourne for 10 years? No, 20 years, 20 years. And we, every seven years, when you have to update your comprehensive plan, they come to us. It's like, hey, time for another update. We do the update for them. So that's why it's weird, because if anybody asks me, how long have you been with Inspire? 24 years, because I have not changed jobs. Same clients, same project, same work, but it's just that, that's the nature of the business, you know, you get acquired by these bigger companies, but we decided to just get out of that and just be planning landscape architecture and urban design.
Anybody else have any questions? So, hey, are you helping St. Augustine with a parking problem?
We have suffered that when we...
Oh, man, that's, that place is very hard to park in St. Augustine.
It is, it is.
Henry, go ahead. I had to throw that in when you said that, I'm very good friends with the mayor of St. Augustine Beach.
Just an offhand question, you know, we have a major problem with cars on the road. I won't hold you to it, but what solution would you have for that? Just offhand, seriously.
Yeah, one thing that we looked into when we were preparing, when we were preparing for this interview?
Yes.
One thing that I asked Jess, I said, can you please check with FDOT to see what context classification they have for this roadway? Because in the past, we have always talked about arterials, collectors, and it's just about moving cars, right? But FDOT started changing their tune and started talking about the context, because an arterial can go through many different types of environment, right? They go through the rural area, they go through the edge of town, they go through the middle of town. And like, for example, we worked on a project in Cluestown. Cluestown is right on 27, 27 goes right through town, and it's the heaviest truck traffic that you can imagine. And what we were working, and we worked with FDOT at the time, was like, we understand the trucks need to go through here. We understand that, you know, you have to move the traffic, but at the same time, you're going through a downtown. So what can we do to make sure everybody slows down? Because it doesn't matter what you put on the signs, people are not going to respect the signs. So how can you design the road in a way that is going to reflect the fact that you're going through a community, and not just zooming through a community? So the context classification that FDOT has for US1 is urban. So basically, what they want to see is a commitment from the community, that if you want your community to look a certain way, they may work with you on the speed of the road. You know, we're not going to change the number of lanes, we're not going to change, you know, the fact that you have so many cars going through it, but there are minor changes that they can make in terms of ensuring that people slow down as they go through the community, and they know that you're going through a special place.
I don't want to belabor the subject, because it's just something happened to them.
Yes, and we always try to think about that, it's more like, how do the locals feel about the road?
If I could ask you one more question?
Okay.
And I don't expect you to name names or companies or anything else, but on occasion, you have not gotten the job, right?
Not done a job?
Yes, when you make application for what we're looking for...
Okay.
You don't always get the job.
That's true.
Right. And what contributed, do you think, that you didn't get that job?
I can speak of one recent one, and I'm not going to name any names.
I'm not asking you to do that.
But the company that got the job had done work in the community.
Okay.
So the selection committee, selection committee felt more comfortable working with somebody who had already been there.
Right.
Now, it has pros and cons, and that's how they decided to do it, that's fine. Other times, we have been beaten by, like, nationwide companies that seem very appealing to the selection committees, like, whoa, they have done work in California and the Northeast and whatever. If that's what they want, that's, that's fine.
And going along with that same course of action, how often have you been here, et cetera, et cetera, physically?
Physically.
Out of all four, if you're just all four, you throw, if you've been to the Keys, throw it in.
I'll say this, I've worked for, and I realize it's different, I worked for Key West for years, I continue to work with them, so I'm down once a month, if not more. I'll share that, Christina, why don't you give?
I live part-time in Key Largo, actually, so I'm not far away, and I go to Island Home for, to get plants and stuff like that.
That's really good.
You know, I would say that, you know, this is, this is a part of our general area home, I mean, the South Florida home.
Okay. So, so what about time-wise? Sharon, is this okay? I want, oh, oh, I thought you... Time-wise, if we were to pick y'all, how soon could you get going on this?
It depends on how fast the paperwork can be processed. You know, once we have a notice to proceed, we'll call staff and schedule a kickoff meeting and get going.
Do you have a rough idea how long it would take you?
From the moment you gave us the go-ahead, depends on when they're available. We call, if we get the paper tomorrow, we'll call them the next day, say, when are you available? And if they tell us next Monday, we're ready to start on Monday.
Okay, all right. Does the staff, y'all have any? Rob, Jennifer?
I just want to know where your office is in Boston, I'm from...
So we have a planner who went to Harvard, and he was in North Carolina when we hired him, and he started working from North Carolina, and after a while, he said, I would really like to go to Boston. And George Kramer, our president, he's the type of guy who says, awesome, we're going to have an office in Boston. So he's opening an office in Boston. And we just had an interview with Boston yesterday, with the city.
Well, I think, if there's no other questions, I just want to thank you for your enthusiasm, young man, you came in with it, and your whole team, just, okay? And you have a part-time house in Key Largo, so you...
Lots of plans for Island Homes.
Yeah, uh-huh, local, yeah. So anyways, thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
Now what? Is that, we don't have anything else on here, so is it time to adjourn?
I would, I would like to discuss when we're going to make a decision.
Yes.
So I have on your, sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to let you know, I had put already on your October, I believe it's 12th agenda, a resolution for consideration, because I was under the impression, when we had the discussion about this meeting, the council was adamant they didn't want to make a decision this evening, that they wanted some time to think about it, so that's why we didn't bring the resolution this evening. But obviously, it's your decision, however you want to do it, but I have, we have prepared a resolution for the, your next October land use meeting.
Okay.
I wouldn't like to make a comment.
Yes.
I would, I know that often, if you go away from something like this and then revisit it later, the details sort of get fuzzy. I would be very happy to have a quick conversation about how we felt about each, and even, I'm happy to make a decision tonight. I mean, I think everyone, we've heard on, from a lot of different people, that there's some real similarities, these are highly qualified groups. I think even Jennifer, you mentioned that, that it's a pretty even group, it's not like... So how do you feel about that?
I think the longer we wait, more stale and forgetful, like me, that things can become. But more importantly, this is something that we should have done a long time ago, stretching that, I mean, if we have to wait till the 12th, that's exactly a month from today, and I don't know that it's justified to wait that long. And if you might, you might not feel comfortable tonight, but maybe, maybe we could tag this on to our meeting on the 17th. I, I'd like to hear some comment, but I'm pretty close, I think I might pull the trigger tonight.
Personally, I don't know how much more you need to know, and if you do, where would you go find it?
Yeah, I agree, Henry.
It's, we heard it, and to delay it...
Sharon, how do you feel?
I'm, I'm in favor of getting it done this evening.
I'm agreeing with everyone.
Okay.
You know, but I think one thing to note is that if you look at how the selection committee scored, they did lean towards somebody, and actually, the last group that was just here, Inspire, they had, I think, two, the highest vote, and then I think the other ones each had like one or something, but just so if that weighs in on anybody, I don't know if it does or not, but we do have selection committees for a reason.
I didn't bring my, I don't have my...
I borrowed them from Elizabeth, so, so you can pass those down.
Buddy, while you were out, we were saying that we were kind of in agreement that if we could have a conversation and make a decision tonight, then we can, we can move it along. Waiting until the next meeting, we are thinking, might just make us forget the details here.
If I may make a comment on the selection committee, that's what promoted me to have the interview of these four applicants. The selection committee only chose two, and my position was, why not all four? Because you never know until you hear from them.
Wait, I'm lost, what do you mean, the selection committee only chose two?
The selection committee from the, from the staff, I was at the meeting.
Well, there's three or four, there's three that have, all have votes, there's not just two, there's...
I think he was saying that they were just...
I'm seeing the selection committee chosen by the, by the staff...
Yeah.
Came up with two contenders, not four.
I know that, but, but I'm just saying, there's three that got votes, so that's all I'm pointing.
We ranked, we ranked all five.
Yeah, you ranked all, yeah.
We ranked all five, and we did not choose to interview any, so we didn't choose two, three, or four, we ranked all five.
I just counted the number of votes.
And we, we made a recommendation of one.
Well, whatever. The reason I suggested, and I appreciate everybody going along with me, that we invite four applicants, which we have, and it's up to us on the four, it's, I'm, well, I'm only here for a few more weeks, I guess I'll make a few mistakes, but I just feel it's our decision, not the selection committee, and we certainly have enough background between us and what we've heard here this evening to make a, a good decision. That's all I can tell you.
Great.
Does anybody want to share what you liked or didn't like? I mean, what I'm asking for is, I have some thoughts in my mind, but I haven't locked in on any one yet. I have a couple that are good, a couple that are also good, but I like a couple better than the others, but I could be influenced, how about that?
Hey, tell us who you like.
I like the first two, and I like the first two, but I, there's different things about them. First of all, Jason, I believe was the gentleman's name?
Jason King.
The most passionate one, I believe, and you can't buy that. And so I liked his approach, he'd been in the Keys before, worked in the Keys before, lived on islands before, had a good...
Historic thing in Tavonier, then?
Yeah, and he, and he worked for the county, so he would, he knows us, I like that. I also liked Calvin Giordino, as you heard me say, I have known Sylvia Vargas, so I knew her back then, I wouldn't say I've known her for 26 years, but worked with her then, and then I know, we've, our village has worked with that firm some. They're a bigger firm, have more resources, Jason's firm is smaller and more nimble, so there's advantages to both of those, and I'm conflicted, I just, I, I need more input. The other two are good, I don't fault them at all. The, the third one with Aaron, you know, it's a different setup where you have an assembly of partners, as opposed to a big company. So there's pros and cons to that. And then the last one is newer, and is headquartered in Orlando, and when I asked the question about working in an area of critical state concern, I didn't hear anything in the Keys. So you can't, there's a learning curve to working here, and there's a learning curve to not just the Keys, but to any kind of an area of critical state concern. So those are things that influenced me, so you can kind of see, I like the first two, the second two, also excellent, but had different approaches and different setups. So those are my thoughts, and I sure would like to hear yours.
Can I, can I say one thing, and I'm sorry to interrupt, just about the, because I know there was a discussion with the first Able City East about the price and a concession that they were potentially willing to make. I would just say, in terms of your analysis, the council's analysis and ultimate selection, it should be based on the totality of what they submitted, and if you do end up choosing them as the most qualified firm, then yes, we could negotiate with them, as we can with, with anybody, when it's not a strictly price-based bid.
I left out one other really important concern, and that was, each one had a slightly different answer to the question of, what about the LDRs? And, sorry to tell you stories, but I worked with John's firm, I don't think John was there then, back in the early days when we did the first comprehensive plan, and, and the LDRs and the comp plan were kind of done back-to-back, or, well, side-by-side. You really can't have LDRs until you have a comp plan, because one follows from the other. But they were, they were done and kind of ready to go almost simultaneously. The idea of presenting us and getting paid and finishing a comp plan, and then kind of just leaving the documents on the table for someone to pick up, and then kind of, what did they say, and what does this mean? I like the consistency of the same team taking it from the finish, from the start, all the way to the finish of the LDRs. And the first guy said he could do that. I think this, Giordino said they could do that as well. I don't know if they're, what's included in the price or not, that's a secondary question, but that, that to me is a, now that I'm speaking about it, that's a very, very important thing. And then the timeline, some of them are stretching this out to a year or more just for the comp plan. I don't think we can wait that long, maybe y'all do, it's okay if you do, but we need to get on the horse here and get going. Well, Mark, I'll take, I'll speak my piece, I like the first one, and I like the fourth one. That's me, because both of them came in, they had great enthusiasm, and let me tell you something, you think we're being overbuilt here, or we're being built out? St. Augustine, Flagler County, St. John's County, St. John's County is the fastest-growing county in the United States right now, okay? There couldn't be a more dense area right now, up there, that these people are working on to handle that situation. They're in Flagler right now, they just said St. John's, Clay County, where Green Cove Springs is, that's where Shands Bridge, the 400 million, that bridge they're putting, the new Shands Bridge, going to empty out right there, okay? Even Platteka's going to blow up, you know, Putnam County. I, I know those areas, I lived in Clay County when I was a little boy, I know a little bit about it, and it is exploding, that whole area is, but that... What I'm saying is, if you don't have somebody that knows what they're doing in an area like that, like we are, how dense, I mean, how, how things are for, for whether, you know, knowing about infrastructure, knowing about traffic, knowing about everything, you know? They got that, that, that's true, my, my... That lady that was just there, 24 years, they did 53 comp plans, I mean, I will say that lady with the... 63, 63. So I just liked other ones a little bit better, not a lot better, but because of their South Florida experience, they, they know, you know, they're... A year, now, the second one, number two, that you're talking about Sylvia, they said they're going to, it's going to take at least a year. I agree, I agree, so those are the, those are the things. Let's hear from the ladies, please.
You know, one of the things that I, well, actually, on the last one that you liked, I really liked their graphic presentation, they're clearly very, very in tune with...
These are friendly.
Yeah, however, they all, they did say they're doing the comprehensive plan, and that's it, and I too, kind of go, I mean, there's no question that you've got to do both, both together.
Continuity.
The other thing that I liked about Calvin Giordino is that they were, they made me feel comfortable that they could pick up the phone and talk to any agency at, at any time, they could, you asked that question, I think, about FDOT, and they're like, yeah, I'm going to pick up the phone, we know who these people are.
And Rebecca?
And, oh, I didn't, I think I went to, I was out when some, I don't know, but...
I was surprised with Danny Perez.
But that, that was pretty important, considering the, the many agencies that we do have to deal with in very sticky ways. I, I liked the first guy, too, I liked his enthusiasm and his, but I also felt like he was kind of a one-man show, and while I liked his passion, I, I, and I feel like he would, you know, like, sleep under the bridge if he needed to. Not sure if I liked that or not, but I, I, I felt a little more confident with this Calvin Giordino group because of their... group because of their deep fingers in so many pockets, and they've done a lot in South Florida. I think the group with Erin Dede, I mean, she's a rock star. She's amazing. But I don't think that's a good fit for us, that the Erin Dede group. She is awesome, but I don't think that that.
Chen Moore.
Chen Moore, thank you. I didn't hear enough, so.
They've done all these stormwater plans and resiliency things. That's good technical stuff, but that data is readily available. I mean, we paid for it. It's public record. Any of those other guys can get that. We need somebody that can, has a vision. I mean, it's almost like being an artist or a savant.
I should go? Okay. If you ask me to go, I'm going to go.
Let's go.
I move that we accept.
But we didn't, everybody didn't finish talking. Sheridan didn't get to talk.
I just asked her, and she said.
No, I just, just tell us what you like, and then we'll go back and make a motion.
Yeah. I liked.
Well, he hasn't said a word.
I liked Giordino, okay?
Just a reminder, we'll have to have public comment if we're taking action on this.
John, I mean, me personally, I don't know if I want to take action tonight. I'd like to at least think about this over the weekend. We're going to meet on Tuesday. If, I don't know if, John, if we'd be allowed to take a vote on Tuesday, but I think we ought to at least, trying to make this big decision right now, when some of us got to digest, I don't agree with that. I think we can wait until Tuesday, and we can take a vote then. We can come in here if we need to ask questions or anything. That's just my personal opinion. So I'm only one of five.
You were outside when we said tonight. No, you were outside.
I wouldn't ask, I wouldn't ask more questions.
You're missing my point. My point was, when we, the four of us were here, we said we should talk and maybe make a decision, or at least get closer tonight.
No, Henry said he was going to make a decision.
Well, I'm not.
Okay. I don't agree with that.
What do you think?
Well, my question is, what do you expect to find out? What answers that were, were done, you said, the answers?
You know what I want to do?
Yes.
I want to really look at them a little harder, the two groups that I like. And if I need Jennifer to ask some questions, or Mr. Cole to ask questions, I want to ask some more questions.
All right, that's you.
That's me, yeah.
I'm prepared this evening.
I mean, I know Chen Moore very well. I worked with him with Aqueduct. They're a very good firm, but they're not, they weren't what, what I would think is for what we need here. Okay?
What do you want to do?
What about Sharon's opinion?
I'll move it right now, if I can get a second.
Who are your preferences? Who do you like? One and two?
I just have one preference. Giordino, yes. That's it for me.
I liked one and two as well. I did like the first guy. And I don't think he's going to sleep under a bridge. But I think, I think, you know, sometimes, like this number two, Giordino, the one you like, Henry, sometimes when you're too big, you're too big. And sometimes when you're only a smaller thing, you sometimes tend to do a more thorough, better job. That's just my opinion. And I know people out there had their experience with Giordino, and, you know, you can read it on their faces when you say something. But I like the first two. And I'm sort of like on the fence. And I don't know if I could pick one of the two tonight. I like the first guy. I think anybody who wants something, is hungry, is going to do a good job. And I know when I started my business, I was delivering flowers at midnight. Now it's like 3:00, and I'm out of here. But, you know, when you're hungry, you do extra, I think. And then when you're just a number, sometimes you're just a number. So.
How do you know that person fits the bill with what you just said?
What person?
Who, the one that you favor.
I don't favor anybody. I just.
Well, who's the hungriest, then?
Oh, well, definitely the first guy.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
So what do you mean? How does he fit the bill?
I asked you, the only question, how does he fit your bill? That's all.
I think, I think he's done a lot of good work. I think he's eager. I think he's small enough that will get the extra attention that we need. But then again, you go to the bigger group, and they have Giordino, they have experience. But that doesn't, to me, Henry, you know, just because some group is big doesn't mean they're better. That's all.
My suggestion, my vote is put on that.
I know. Okay. So where, what do you guys want to do?
I personally don't want to, I don't want to vote on this tonight, because I think we need to, I've heard them, and we need to digest it. We need to, seriously, this is a big decision.
What I need to digest is the dinner I'm going to have, so.
I don't think that we can have this decision on the budget hearing night. Is that right, John?
We would have to set it as a separate meeting. We could do it on the same day. But we would have an absolute hard stop time. This could not bleed into the budget hearing.
We don't have enough time to notice it, right?
I think our code says 72 hours. So I think, I think we could, just barely, yeah.
Thank you. But I still, I'm totally, I personally don't know what more I'm going to need to know. I feel like I, I'd like to wrap it up tonight.
Right. Make a motion.
Well, you know, I would move to go with the Giordino group, because what concerns me about whatever that guy's name, the passionate one.
Jason.
Jason, thank you, is, is, I didn't, I just didn't see the depth. So when something happens to him, then, you know, what happens to our big, exciting, like, this is a super exciting meeting. This, I'm excited about what we're going to do in our town. And I, and I want the depth. That's, and they've done every city in South Florida, this group. And so I would move to go with that Giordino group.
I'll second it.
Now, you're putting me on the spot. I'm not ready yet.
Well, let's, let's take a consensus. Who can we, who's willing to wait?
Well, no, we do have a motion and a second. We have to, we have to vote on it. But before you do, you do need to take public comment.
Oh.
Should we take, well, let's open public comment, then.
I know, why am I listening?
Anybody for public comment?
Of course. What do you mean? What do you think?
Get in line, then.
I'd like to ask the mayor what he discussed outside the cone of silence when he left the meeting.
No, you know what, Van? I don't have to, I don't have to discuss. I went and got the cards and gave each council person a card.
Okay, well, if that's what you did, that's fine. And I also wanted to appreciate the fact that you guys did allow four presentations to be heard by the public. So the public that's watching this meeting, and will watch the replays of this meeting, have an idea of the talent array that was available to us. And, you know, my own personal opinion, I'm going to keep until you guys have made your decision. But I appreciate the intense concentration that you put into listening to all these presentations. And I think the people of Alamo Rata appreciate the fact that they were allowed to participate in, they all have their choices now, too. So, you know, how your choice falls up against their choice is going to be an interesting thing to watch. But clearly, all the people that presented tonight were very, very talented, and we could do a whole lot worse. And our LDRs and comp plan need to be done at the same time. So I would take that into consideration when you consider the people that presented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb?
Deb Gillis, Alamo Rata. I'm on your page, buddy, but that's the way I process information, is that I would be fine with Tuesday, the 17th, is that Tuesday? Whatever the next meeting is. But to just give you a little bit of time to absorb what you heard, you know, I know you were taking notes or paying attention, or go back and watch the tape even, and say, wait a minute, what did they say about this? Just to make sure that you're clear, I missed the first presentation. I did like the second presentation over the other two the best. Even though you reminded me, I forgot it started at 4:30. So I would suggest that you wait till Tuesday. Not to draw it out. It is a thing that you, you need to get started as soon as possible, but a few days is good.
I agree. Don, come on.
Thank you. Don Horton, 47 Schooner Bay Road. I don't disagree with waiting until Tuesday. I wouldn't go any further than that. I got to tell you that, one of the things I did, I love the passion of number one. I have worked personally for many years with Sylvia Vargas, very smart, very talented lady, and obviously, the lead for Calvin Giordano in this, in this instance. One of the things that impressed me about number one, though, and the reason why I wanted to go out and talk to them for a minute, was, was his passion on affordable housing, was his passion on traffic and parking. Those are two major issues that we have. Now, he's obviously done his homework a little bit, listened to what we've had discussions about. But I had told him when we were out there that I was impressed with those, those two things. And, and told him that I had actually written a parking code a while back for the, for the village, and explained to him that I was the previous building official for Alamo Rata. And Mark knows that parking and traffic is one of my passions. I've studied it. I've read books. I've loaned my books out to people about the high cost of free parking and parking. And one of the comments that he said to me was, I can't believe that they took a code that you had written in conjunction with Rebecca Jettan, who had just left the state. So she knew our code very well as well. And they just threw it in the round file. That they should have listened to their building official, because there's no one else that reviews more site plans, parking plans, and those kind of things, as the building official, as he's going through the plan review. I was very impressed with that. So I don't have a problem with you guys holding off till Tuesday. But truly, Calvin Giordano is extremely talented, and number one impressed me a lot. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Don. Hey, Don, thank you, by the way, for getting me a card from them. Thank you. Okay? For number one, for Jason.
We do have Mr. Buschmeyer also on Zoom who'd like to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Buschmeyer, go ahead.
Jason Key. In making your decision, I will tell you that, yes, I was also impressed with number one, not only by the enthusiasm that he had, but also by the amount of public response that he was going to have, how many meetings he was going to have. He was going to keep the public well-involved at every step, so that we could all feel like we have a part in redoing this comp plan. And he's really the only one that really stressed that he was going to spend a lot of time on the LDRs as well. So I think you get more bang for your buck having somebody who has that laid out from the beginning. And you know that he's going to work on both of them at the same time. So I hope you keep those into consideration when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, I.
Can we agree to wait till Tuesday?
I would like to wait till Tuesday.
I know how you guys feel, and you're ready to vote now, but I'm truly on that little fence. And if I'm outvoted, I'm outvoted. But I'm just saying, you know.
Other question.
You know, I, 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 I respect your, your concern. I, I'm fine if we want to wait. I just, personally, I don't, I mean, you know how long ago this was on the agenda, and I waited through all those applications, like, months ago? But it's, it's up to the council. I would really prefer just to move on, get moving, but I can respect your concerns. I personally have no, I do not think this is an easy decision, and I think it's an important one. And.
It's an extremely important decision.
I have taken it very seriously. I certainly have. I would say, you know, one other comment on our passionate friend, whatever his name is, Jason, it concerns me that he was willing to cut his price. That is a very troublesome feature in a business proposal. That, like, sets off alarm bells for me.
It doesn't for me, because I've done it, I've done it when I.
Well, he was going to cut the price and double the work.
That is even more alarming to me. I don't feel comfortable with that. But nonetheless, that is not the question. Just going to throw it out there.
But Elizabeth, you got to realize something. I've been there. I know what you're talking about. I've been on a job at Boca Chica, and I had 38% profit in it. But because I was a small, single-owner proprietor, okay, they didn't think I could do the job, even though I did a lot of work there. And they went with a bid that was probably, if I would have bid what that person did, I would have made 70% profit. But a smaller company doesn't have the overhead as some of these bigger companies have. So they don't, you know, they're just, they're able to come in on a better profit margin. So, but I learned my lesson down there, because I bid a very good price. I've had these guys come in and tell me, Encore was another one, oh, you're smoking low guns price. And I said, well, I'm almost at 50%. If you want me to double for a project on Duck Key with the Florida Keys Aqueduct. So sometimes, you know what? It is, when you're a small company, and you know how to go in and get it done, but people think because your price is so low, that it scares them.
Okay.
But I personally think.
Guys, what do you, I mean, I can wait till Tuesday, but I would prefer just to get it done tonight. Do you guys have an opinion?
I would like to get it done tonight. My judgment is not, my judgment is not predicated on the price. I don't really care how much it is, as long as we pick.
Oh, my goodness.
Of course not. This, this, what we're doing here this evening, I'm not going to worry about the price. This is a major, major, major.
And that's why we should take the.
And the price, if you're going to worry about the price.
We've had the materials for weeks.
All right. Go ahead, then.
Of course.
I, I'm not, I think we should wait. I think this is, 20 years ago, when we did our comp plan, it's been over 20 years ago, and we're going to make a decision right now after hearing these people. I, I personally, I want the public to know, I don't, I am not taking part of this. I don't, I think we should wait until Tuesday. That's my opinion. I'm only one of five. So I think something this long, that we've waited for a couple more days, is not going to matter. But I'm only one of five, so I want the public to understand that.
Okay.
Well, can't you guys just wait till Tuesday? What?
Other question, please.
There's a motion on the floor. Let's just, it's nothing, nothing personal. Just, let's move it on.
You know, and I have to point this out, that I'm, well, that, that, some of these people are going to be gone. So this is a very important decision for me, because I'm still here. And so that's sort of why I wanted some more time. But whatever.
I do have a comment on that.
No, you're not going to leave town, but you're not going to be sitting up here making decisions. Anyhow, you guys just do what you want.
I'm going to talk just as small.
I know you will, Henry. I've known you my whole life. I know you, I'm sure you're going to be throwing stuff, too. But you, do what you want.
Just procedurally, I wanted to, since there's, talk about different things, I just wanted to, procedurally, there's, there's three options. One, proceed with the motion, obviously, and we can have a vote, however it turns out, it turns out. Two, there's, could be a motion to postpone to a time certain. Or three, if there was a withdrawal of the motion, I guess, would be the third option. But I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware, because we've kind of talked about different things, but I wanted to make sure you're all aware of what the procedure would be.
Okay.
I would just comment that, since I've made the motion, that, you know, I am not running for the, I will not be here in three months, but I'm still taking this role very seriously, and making decisions with the intention that it is the best decision moving forward. And we're not done doing business just because we have an election in November, and I'm acting in that way. So I just want to go ahead and call it. Just, let's move it on. So.
Nor am I.
And I think, did you second it?
Nor, and nor were you.
Yes, there was a second by Councilmember Rosenthal.
Yes.
Okay. So is that what we're going to do?
So can we call the, can we call the vote, please?
Wait a minute, Henry. I'm, I'm, are you, what's your opinion?
Let's vote.
Wait until Tuesday, or you want to vote?
Listen, this is just like the thing that we did with the manager. And I'm not saying that in any way, but we have an indecision issue, and this has waited a long time. If we do this tonight, we can call him tomorrow and say, get to work. And, I mean, we're all pretty close. The vice mayor, that was one of her two top choices. So I don't feel like we're going too far outside the white lines on what she would choose, and.
But how, Mark, can you, as long as you've been here, too, you want to make a decision and not, a huge decision, okay, about which direction our village is going to go, what we're going to do, all of us? I don't understand it, how we, we can sit here tonight and make a decision after hearing these people give so much information, that you can make an intelligent decision right now on that group?
I'll tell you how, buddy. I've read, we've had this information for months. I read this two months ago, in preparation for a meeting. It does, I, that's, I heard them. I digested that with the information. I've, I've read this stuff twice already.
Marnie, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead and call the roll, Marnie.
Hey, Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Well, I'm going to say that I like number one, but I'm going to vote yes, just because he's good, too, or they're good, too. So yes.
And Mayor Buddy Hender.
No.
Okay, that motion passes four to one.
We will prepare a resolution selecting Calvin Giordano as the, with regard to RFP 24-10, at a not-to-exceed price of what their price bid was, which I'm looking at was $151,630. And that will authorize the manager to initiate negotiations with them. And then a contract will ultimately, assuming it's successful, will ultimately be brought back for the council's approval.
I have a question.
I find this very interesting, that we, this, something could have been negotiating with, with this guy Jason, who we all, I think, really like to, but what did Henry say? He doesn't, he's not worried about the money.
Would that, would that be coming back on Tuesday, then? Or would that, are we asking for that to come back on Tuesday?
No, you don't need, the resolution will be prepared, and it'll be signed. So, yeah.
Like it's already, we don't-
Yeah, that, yeah. So that'll be done. And then the, what will eventually come back is the contract for approval.
I move for adjournment.
Okay, let's, we're adjourned.